Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the city. I've been told to please announce welcome to beautiful downtown San Antonio. We're almost ready to start the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. So I just wanted to thank you all for being here and being here on time. There's about six or seven members of the City Council who are here. They can't get started because it's going to happen again. So give us a few minutes, please. Make sure you're engaged. I also want to make quick announcements. Is there a Sunni gang in the audience? There's a Sunni gang here. Please come to the front of the hall here. Have a little, uh, get your daughter. She's looking for you. Justice, justice. Good evening again, everybody. Want to, um, issue, I think, a two-minute warning here. We're about to get started. Uh, wanted to again welcome you and thank you for your patience. And announce, since, uh, it is pretty crowded here, there's still a lot of empty seats up near the front. So for those of you who are standing up near the back or outside the door, wondering if, uh, there's a way to get in here, there's plenty of seats to fill in here near the front if you wanna move forward. And, uh, let me also, in the meantime, announce that we have, I think it's seven members of the City Council who are here by now. Uh, we'll intro- that, we'll introduce them each individually at the beginning of the meeting. But, uh, we're just a few minutes away. Good evening, everybody. Like to call this meeting to order. Want to welcome all of you who are in the audience here tonight. Uh, and remind those of you who are still standing. This is standing room only. That we do have a number of empty seats here near the front. So please feel free to come forward and find a seat so that you can be more comfortable. And, uh, so our fire marshal can rest easy. He's starting to get worried. It is a full house here tonight. And they are setting up an overflow crowd outside and in an adjacent room where you can watch the council proceedings on a monitor. But let me announce and welcome everybody to a special meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for Wednesday, July 21st, 2004. As you can all tell, we're not in City Hall. If you're watching on TV, we are in beautiful El Sereno in the 14th Council District. Give yourselves a hand. And thank you for coming out. Uh, under normal circumstances, the City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. But this is a special meeting here in the 14th Council District. Uh, City Council meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. And we're really thrilled to see such a great turnout this evening. Uh, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35, for those of you watching at home or via webcast from the city's homepage. It is just shy of 7 o'clock and we have, looks like about eight members present, two shy of a quorum. But I wanted to begin today's meeting. Uh, we do have a couple of presentations scheduled. Uh, but first of all, by introducing our, your council member and the representative of the 14th Council District, and the man to my left, Antonio Villarreal.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like you to do that one more time, but do it for you. Big loud applause for yourself. I am so proud. I am so proud to represent the 14th Council manic district, the community I was born and raised in. Many of you know I'm a third-generation Angelino. I first bought my home here in El Sereno, in University Hills. Is anybody from University Hills here tonight? Yeah, we got a few of you. I just wanna real quickly acknowledge some of the communities that make up the 14th Council manic district. Alserino in the house? Yeah. Two months ago, we had the Democratic nominee for president, John Kerry here, uh, at Wilson High School. How about Highland Park? Is Highland Park in the house? Eagle Rock. Eagle Rock's here and there are a lot of people outside. Boyle Heights. Yeah. The largest community in the 14th Council manic district. Herman, how about Herman? Monterey Hills. Mount Washington. Glassell Park. And I think I said Highland Park, but if I didn't, Highland Park. I wanna thank Council President Padilla. Many of you get to watch him on Channel 35. We're very proud of him. He's a great example of an American success story. Let's give Council President Padilla a big hand. To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to introduce the Wilson High School J.R.O.T.C., which will present our flags tonight. If everybody will please stand.
Please join us in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
I want to thank the Wilson High School JROTC. If the Girl Scouts will stay here for a second. Now, the Wilson High School JROTC is represented tonight by First Lieutenant Edgar Mendoza, Sergeant First Class John Morales, Command Sergeant Major Josh McPherson, Sergeant First Class Andy Zai. The cadets are accompanied by First Sergeant Abraham Anderson and First Sergeant James Lee. Give them a big hand, please. And our young Girl Scouts, Girl Scouts Troop 237, let us in the flag salute today. Their names are Selena Harvin, Lauren Hinajosa, Nancy Matasaro, Yvette Santos, Brianna Vidalas, and Samantha Duran. Give them a big hand, our Girl Scouts. By the way, folks, the Girl Scouts and the JROTC have been part of what is now a nationally acclaimed Day of Service that we've sponsored here. More than 5,000 people in the 14th Council Manic District have engaged in service over the last year, and these young girls and the young boys who are here with us in JROTC have participated with us throughout. Thank you all so much. Now I'd like to introduce Adriana Apodaca, who will sing our great country's national anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Adriana. What a wonderful voice. The sound of a great bird for freedom. Thank you so much. One of the reasons why I'm so excited to be able to host today's offside council meeting here in El Sereno in the 14th Council Manic District is I get the honor of acknowledging several wonderful and deserving individuals and organizations from our district. And to begin, I'd like to introduce Julia, Paul and Julia Salas. Paul and Julia Salas are celebrating their 70th anniversary this year. Paul and Julia have been residents of El Sereno for 43 years. They are the proud parents of twin sons who reside in the great state of Texas. They have 13 grandchildren and one grandchild. Mr. Salas, many of you know as the honorary mayor emeritus of El Sereno and a member of that community's bicentennial committee. They are both very active with the El Sereno Senior Center and never miss a community event. I'd like to present this certificate to the two of you, congratulating you on your beautiful marriage and thanking you for the years of service to the great community of El Sereno. Would you like to say a word? Here we go. Would you like to say a word? Here we go.
I want to thank all of you for joining us in this ceremony, and I'm very, very proud of El Sereno, and particularly Tony Villarrosa. We're going to vote for him again, aren't we?
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, we like that.
We're going to vote for him again, aren't we? Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, thank you. You know, by the way, so that you know, one second, if you stay here, the big joke is when they say they know me very well, and they call me Tony, my staff almost always knows they don't, except, except for the people that have known me since I was a kid. They know me as Tony. So thank you so much. And on behalf of the 14th Council Manic District, we want to present our honorary mayor, this wonderful bouquet of flowers representing 70 years of love and affection, commitment to our community, from the great Portola Pharmacy that I used to go to 40 years ago. Muchas gracias, felicitaciones.
Thank you, everybody. You have to live 70 years to know what you're going through.
By the way, before I begin, folks, please help me in welcoming the First Lady of the 14th Council Manic District, Karina Villarrosa, my wife. My only son, Antonio Villarrosa. And my miracle child, my youngest daughter, Natalia Fair. For our second presentation, I'd like Bob Berg, Sandy Berg, and Raquel Escamilla from Alice Paint Company to come to the stage, please. And while they're coming to the stage, the staff, the city staff, or the family, city family who are here, please make sure that those people out there have seats and a microphone, hopefully. I understood that they were going to be taken care of. Unless there's an air conditioning problem, probably be a good thing to open up those doors, if we could. If there's not, if it's not an issue with the air conditioning, if you could please open up the doors in the back. Alice Paint Company was founded in 1887 by the Alice family in the state of Montana. They moved to Long Beach, California in the early 1930s. My family was here about 30 years before that. And the company grew alongside the expansion of the Southern California market by serving customers like Southern California Edison, the city of Long Beach, and McDonnell Douglas, which is now Boeing Company. The company was run by the Alice family until it was purchased by Robert O. Berg in 1969. Mr. Berg acquired Pacific Coast Lacquer, PCL, a solvent distribution company located in Boyle Heights in 1964. Pacific Coast Lacquer was the first company Mr. Berg purchased in Los Angeles. Berg combined with Alice and Pacific in 1976, when he purchased a West Coast Sherwin-Williams plant at 3150 East Pico Boulevard, which is now the headquarters of Alice Paint. And Alice Painting, as well as Alice/PCL and Pacific Resource Recovery Services, are now run by Sandy Berg, who was appointed president in 1992. Alice Paint Company has been a vital partner to our office, donating all the paint that we've used for murals, which we've done on our days of community service in Boyle Heights, and the first mural we did here in El Sereno in June. They are also key participants in our other projects, including the holiday toy drive on the First Street Bridge. And so it gives me great pleasure to present this certificate to Bob Berg, Sandy Berg, and Raquel Escamilla, recognizing the 75th anniversary of Alice Paint Company in the heart of East Los Angeles. Thank you for your support of our great community.
The reason this company has been successful is obviously the people. When I came to East Los Angeles in 1964, we had three employees. Today, we have 130. It's not easy being a paint manufacturer in the state of California, but when you have dedicated people, as we do, why, it not only makes it possible, but it makes it fun. We've asked Raquel Escamilla to join us today because she has spent 37 years with this company and is one of our great success stories, and we have a lot of them. So we feel that this community's been good to us, and we hope that in some small way that we have given back to the community, because it has been labor of love for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berg, and to all of you at Alice Paint for all the work that you do in our community, and for celebrating your 75th anniversary with us. Thank you all so much. Give them a big hand. I just noticed our great, and I mean that, President of the School Board, Jose Weisar here with us, please give him a big hand. I would like to welcome Mr. Curtis Hill to the stage. Give him a big hand, everybody. Now, he was shy, because when I asked, when I said that I bought my first home in El Sereno in 1977, is my recollection, 79, I bought it in University Hills, and you didn't raise your hand. Mr. Curtis is a resident of University Hills, and he's retiring from the city of Los Angeles with more than 17 years of service as a dedicated employee. He began his career with the city on January 5th, 1987, as a tax and permit field representative in the office of the city clerk's tax and permit division. He was promoted to tax and permit field representative II in 1990, and senior tax field representative in 1994. He was commended for use of little, of no sick time for at least 14 of the 17 years of the city of Los Angeles. Don't tell me we don't have dedicated employees. Give him a big hand for that. He's received many certificates of appreciation and commendation from Gilbert Lindsay, former council member, Elias Martinez, the city clerk. He's also received commendation for outstanding efforts and special projects in 1988, 1992, 1999, and 2002. He received a Productivity Commission Award in 1999 for his work in updating and reorganizing, and I want you to hear this, the annual business tax renewal form distributed to more than 200,000 taxpayers. Through his leadership, skills, and knowledge, during more than seven years leading the TAPS unit, he was responsible for the successful processing of well over 1 million annual tax renewals, resulting in more than $2 billion in timely revenue to the city of Los Angeles. So for that, we honor you for your 17 years of service to the city, for being a great resident of the 14th Council Manic District, University Hills, my old stomping grounds where I grew up. Congratulations, Mr. Hill.
Thank everybody for being here, and it has been a pleasure working for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Well, in addition to great service, an impeccable record, a very humble man as well. Thank you. Give him a loud acknowledgement. And I'll say it again on the mic, because I'm hoping somebody's going to hear us. I really would like to see and make sure that the people out there, and there are a few hundred people out there, like to make sure they get a chair to sit on and have a place to watch today's proceedings. I understand that those details are getting worked out, but I want to make sure these people who took time from their busy schedules are accommodated. The next presentation, if I can call up Mr. Steve Uranga to the stage. Yeah. And his wonderful wife, Letitia Quesada, former school board president from the 14th Council Manic District. And while they're coming up, I'd like to acknowledge Cynthia Reese, Board of Public Works Commissioner, homeowner for more than 20 years here in El Sereno, longtime member Is Hillside Village in the house? There in the house. They're in the house. Thank you. In fact, if you don't know, members, in El Sarino, there's El Sarino, there's University Hills, there's Hillside Village, there's Colas, there's Rose Hills, and don't you forget it? And I probably forgot one or two, right? Steven Uranga is retiring on August 20th this year from the Department of Recreation and Parks, following 26 years of loyal, dedicated, and professional service with the city of Los Angeles. He began his career with the purchasing department in 1978 and quickly moved to the Community Development Department. There, he's been recognized for his creative thinking, his problem-solving skills, his leadership, and his supervisory aptitude. He's masterful at developing relationships with individuals and organizations throughout the city, the state, and communities that led to innumerable innovations, improvements, and growth within the CDD. He was an integral force in the success of such programs as SEDA, Job Training and Partnership Act, JTPA, and specialized in facilitating employment and training opportunities for the economic disadvantaged segments of the city's population. He brought his talent and expertise to the Department of Recreation and Parks in 1997, working in the grants administration section. He's been active in city employees, including the citywide affirmative action committee. That's a big reason why this city family is as diverse as it is today. He's a 1966 graduate from El Sarino's Woodrow Wilson High School. Yeah. Attended East LA College and Cal State LA, where he had a business degree. He served arms forces in the US Air Force, and most importantly, he is a friend of mine, the partner, life partner, of Letitia Quesada, the former school board president, who was one of the leaders in ensuring that our schools on the east side were invested in, had good teachers, and most importantly, high expectations. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, Steven, I'd like to acknowledge your 26 years, your love for community, and your lifetime partnership with Letitia Quesada.
I'll be brief. I have to say it's been a great 26 years with the city of Los Angeles. I met Letitia in my first job with the Community Development Department, so it's been very fruitful. The, this meeting here today and my retirement, that just conjures up a lot of good karma for me, is I go into retirement. And I want to thank the city council. You all should know the Department of Recreation and Parks is a hard-working department, great people there. I want to thank my staff, who have made my job much easier over this last seven years. And of course, thank Letitia, who's always been there for me. And Antonio, thank you very much. Good luck with your next step, whatever that might be. And thank you all for being here, and thank you.
Thank you, Steven. You know, I know it's true for all of us, especially those of us who were raised here in the city, and it's such an honor to represent people that you grew up with, that you went to school with, that you worked with, and now we're all getting old together. So, thank you all so much. Speak for yourself, said Janice Hahn. She's not getting old. If I could now call Linda McGuire to the stage to join me? Yeah. Everybody in this community knows Linda McGuire. I've known Linda for some time, and those of you who know her as well know her for her commitment to the community through her involvement in so many, many organizations. She lived in El Sarino for 15 years, and she's the be-all and end-all to every organization in this community. She's a board member of the LA 32 Neighborhood Council. She's a member of the El Sarino Coordinating Council. She's been involved in the annual El Sarino Bicentennial Parade, which was a great success this year, as a member of its organizing committee. She's a neighborhood block captain. She's also a part of the El Sarino Beautification Committee. She played a key role in helping to organize the day of service that we had in El Sarino with 800 people. She's currently the honorary mayor of El Sereno. She's a devoted mother to her two sons and her daughter. And Linda, we want to thank you for your hard work and your leadership in making this the great community that it is. Muchas gracias.
Do I get my two minutes up here? I would just like to thank everybody, and I know I've said this in the past, to do as much volunteer work in the community just doesn't take your personal desire. It takes the support of your family, and I'm so grateful to have all my family here tonight, and thank you guys for putting up with me all these years. Also, I'd like to say, you know, a leader isn't born, you know, we learn. And I just would like to thank Mark Woodsmaul for being our vice, our president of LA 32 Neighborhood Council last year, and through his leadership, he taught me so much. And also Tammy Membrano, she's back there. And listening to her and seeing how she leads, I just took examples from our leaders that we have in this community, and I just would like to thank everybody, because this wasn't a solo effort. And thank you, Antonio, very much.
Let me acknowledge the president of the Hometown Restaurant Workers Union, longtime resident homeowner here in El Sarino on Colas Avenue, Maria Elena Durazo. For our next presentation, I'd like to welcome Elena Pop, if you could please come to the stage. Give her a big hand. And Bridget, that had come up here too. Elena is an American success story. She's a longtime activist. She was born in Mexico and immigrated to Los Angeles in 1968 with her mother and two younger siblings. She's a poet, an organizer, and happens to have a license to practice law. And together with her partner, Bridget Gonzalez, she's raising six children of the four-legged variety. And as a member of community of women, she calls her chosen family. She's currently the executive director of the Eviction Defense Network, a social entrepreneurship project dedicated to increasing access to justice for low-income tenants. From 1992 to 2004, Elena was an attorney at Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. And for nearly 20 years, she has been providing access to justice in the areas of housing and community economic development. She co-founded the Healthy Homes Collaborative of Southern California, an innovative coalition that brings together health and health access advocates, environmental justice advocates, and housing rights advocates, together to address the health consequences of environmental hazards in children's environments. She's participated on the boards of numerous community organizations, including the Venice Renters Canvas, the Venice Community Housing Corporation, Lesbianas Unidas, and Parents Organized for West Side Renewal. She's also participated in the Venice Neighborhood Action Coalition, the West LA Metro Alliance, and the Coalition of 1988, 1990, 1992, and 1994. On a proud note, I want to say she's been a very, very dear friend of mine. 20 years working with Legal Aid, now moving on to other endeavors. A great member of the 14th Councilmatic District, residing in Glassell Park, Elena Pop. Before you say something, Mr. Reyes would like to say a word or two.
I just wanted to personally thank Elena Pop for all her hard work. Since early 90s, I've seen her work throughout most of the areas. We have all of these issues dealing with how tenants can be abused by landlords, and how landlords can be abused by tenants. You've worked both sides of the table. I just want to thank you on behalf of all the children, all the families that benefited from your hard work. Cambria Co-op, the magnificent example, how you organized the abuelitas and the tias to take over a gang-ridden building and make it an oasis in a place where there was a lot of madness. And on behalf of those children and families, I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, Elena.
Ms. Gru would like to say something?
Thank you. We have to give them the signal over there to turn on the microphone. Elena, I want to join with Councilmember Verigosa and Councilmember Reyes in acknowledging you. For those of you in the room that don't know her, she is an incredible advocate. No matter where you are, she'll catch you and give you that two seconds, two minutes of, this is important, it's important to take care of our tenants, important to save this housing. And I want to thank you, as Mr. Reyes said, on behalf of all of the families and tenants that you've represented, and you've really been a model advocate for housing. And a special thank you from me as well.
Well, I'll just say that it is both an honor and a pleasure to be of service to this community, and I am deeply touched by this gesture. And if anybody out there ever needs a good people's lawyer, Antonio's staff always knows where to find me. Thank you.
You know, like so many of our recipients today, of a very humble woman, make no mistake about it, this is a trailblazer, a woman who's opened so many doors, who always speaks out for those who seek justice. Thank you, Elena Pop. If I may call up to the stage the members of the Youth Opportunity Movement who are here with us today, and I'd like to call up councilmembers Padilla, Reyes, and Hahn, since, and Ms. Perry not here with us, but the three of you, because you all have Youth Opportunity Movement. Look at these young people. Is this great? Give them a big hand. As you could see, for those of you in television land, there are a lot, there are probably as many people out there as there are in here today. But we wanted to acknowledge some of the Youth Opportunity Movement, young people. If you can please come on up to the stage. While they're coming up, let me just say that the Youth Opportunity Movement promotes youth achievement by working with families and community partners to create opportunities for young people. These opportunities are designed to help youth reach their education, employment, and personal development goals. Established in Los Angeles in 2000, YO's motto is creating excellence, one youth at a time, and they're doing just that. Give them a big hand. Our city council, our city council and the council members present are big supporters of this movement, because we know that when we invest in young people, we get returns on that investment. We know when we have high expectations for our young people, we get high results and great results from them. This system that YO has developed integrates job training, a focus on education, case management, and works with at-risk youth, some of whom have dropped out of school, who are getting their lives on track with a job or going back to school. They work with their family to ensure positive steps for these youth and reinforce a supportive environment at home. I see YO in action in my district, working with the youth in Boyle Heights to create positive changes in their lives. This year, just a few days ago, we announced our Earn and Learn Program, which we launched with the Housing Authority, the Archdiocese, and the East LA Skill Center, that will provide 120 youth who live in public housing communities, including Rose Hills, a summer job, and credit toward their diplomas. But one of the reasons we're acknowledging them today is today, well, this week, we received word, and I'm very proud to announce, that the Youth Opportunity Movement in the 14th Councilmatic District and throughout the city has been awarded the US Department of Labor's Employment Training Administration Recognition of Excellence. This is for all the programs, not just Youth Opportunity programs, all the programs that they fund. I want to thank Greg Burks, Cord Bailey, Jimmy Valenzuela, Randy Smith, George Beltran, Daniel Laughlin, Luba Robinson, Martin Flores, Jackie Horton, and Moli Mendez, Maribel Ramirez, Ramon Sierra. And please ask a representative, unless one of our council members, representative to speak.
Mr. Burks. Good evening. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles and all the Councilmatic Districts that the Youth Opportunity Movement participate in, we just want to say that four years ago, it was a true challenge and a hope and a wish, and a lot of hard work to develop a program that the city of Los Angeles could be proud of. When we first established the program, we felt that because of the resources provided through the Department of Labor, because of the fact that we could actually engage the brightest, the most passionate, most compassionate staff member to go out to the three specific areas and touch the lives of young people, that we would make a tremendous difference. And four years and 4,500 young people later, we just want to say thank you for your support. And Councilman Verigosa, Councilwoman Hahn, and Councilman Padilla, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. God bless.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilman Reyes. Let's get all in this picture. Let's take a picture here and get the kids. Come on, let's get the kids here. All right, everybody, smile. Turn around and smile. Who's this cute little baby? Thank you all so much. And by the way, folks, just so you know, with the help of the Youth Opportunity Movement... with the help of the Youth Opportunity Movement, this Saturday, we opened up or began construction on the, one of the most innovative youth technology centers anywhere in the nation. About a $10 million investment in Boyle Heights. Youth Opportunity Movement's a big part of that. Thank you all so much. Thank you. Good to see you. How you doing, little brother? Good to see you guys. You're welcome. Don't leave without your certificate here, there. We'll see you. Good to see you. Well, we have, let's see, it looks like two more. But that's what happens when you have offsites. You know, in the year, while they're leaving the stage, in the year that I've been here, I've got to see the offsites that people have in the district. And I realize one of the great opportunities is we get to go to our communities and acknowledge our heroes. And that's what I intend to do today. I'd like to bring an extraordinary group of young women from Boyle Heights, the most recent graduation class from the Hollenback Police Activities League Knowledge is Power Program. Can we bring up these young women? I want you to know that Councilmember Janice Han said, "Girls rule." Yeah, they do. Yes, they do. And we are so proud of these young girls, young women, young women. You know, I was in office all of about a couple of days when Officer Glenda Brooks wanted to have a meeting and we had a little chit chat. And she said, "You know, you have a lot of young women in your district who, with a little help and a little guidance, can go a long way." She goes, "I have a program, but I need your help. You've got to help me find the money to invest in this program, but more importantly, to invest in these young women." And you know, as I like to say, you know, you learn a lot from your constituents and the people that you serve. And I learned real quickly I was going to have to find that money or she might have put me in Hollenback on a visit. And so let me tell you a little bit about the Knowledge is Power Program. It's a 16-week educational program designed to assist the young girls with the difficult challenges they face in today's society. Knowledge is Power is one of several programs run by the Hollenback Police Activities League, commonly known as PAL. PAL is a nonprofit organization operating out of Boyle Heights under the direction of LAPD Officer Glenda Brooks, Executive Director, and Lorraine Garcia, Program Coordinator. You know what? We're going to get a PAL program here in El Surino. How about that? How about that? We're going to get a PAL program in El Surino. PAL is working currently in Boyle Heights in the Estrada Courts housing projects. Many of you know, we also have there a clear program. It's been a place of a lot of gang activity, shootings and even homicides. And this program is working to help these young women learn leadership and life skills to help them become contributing members of society. Other PAL programs include the Get It Straight Program, the Youth Development Conference Leadership Program in Sacramento, and Adapt Parent Leadership Program. These young women graduated from the Knowledge is Power Program, and I want to introduce some of them. Congratulations to Yaspi Aguilar, Janet Ariano, Cindy Ayala, Alejandra Cisneros, Tanya Garcia, Wendy Garcia, Nancy Gonzalez, Angie Helguera, Ariana Helguera, Lucy Helguera, Lourdes Lopez, Valerie Martinez, Kimberly Onofre, Alondra Peña, Alejandra Ruelas, Yessenia Torres and Elvira Villa. And I'd like to thank the Program Coordinators, Glenda Brooks and Lorraine Garcia. And Officer Brooks, can you come on up?
I would just like to thank the Councilman for his support. This is our future. And I have the greatest job in the world working with the youth of Boyle Heights and the support of my captain in the department. And we could use volunteers, I'm going to solicit for it. So if you'd like to help and invest in the youth, come on out and contact me. Thank you. Dolores, Laura and Ruby Sotelo were the facilitators for the course, and they did an excellent job, and the girls just loved them. I'd like to recognize them.
We're going to take a picture here. We want to get your, we want to get all of you in the picture, so why don't we put you in front? Big applause for the future leaders of Los Angeles. There we go. You're welcome. If I can ask Benita Strange to come on up? How many of you from Highland Park? Yeah, Highland Park. Well, Benita Strange is no stranger to Highland Park, I can tell you that. I've known her for more than a decade as an Assembly Member and Speaker of the Assembly, and now as a Council Member. She's led the Clean and Green Your Parkway Program. She coordinates demonstrations on how community members can beautify their parkway. She works with the neighborhood councils, the schools and other community organizations. She coordinated a Clean and Green Your Parkway demonstration on March 20th, which was televised by Channel 35. Unfortunately, she couldn't attend her own event due to a family emergency. But she wasn't able to receive a certificate of recognition for that very successful event. And so on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, Benita, I want to congratulate you. It was a great event. We missed you. We appreciate everything you do for Highland Park and the 14th Councilmatic District.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman, and thank you so much. And many thanks to your wonderful Highland Park staff who have helped me every step along the way. And to the city council members, I'd like to welcome you on behalf of the North Avenue 57 Association, the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council and the Highland Park Heritage Trust. We're all happy that you're here. The Clean and Green Your Parkway campaign is a citywide campaign for Highland Park, encouraging neighbors not just to cut their lawns and clean their lawns, but to go all the way to the street to clean the parkway. And we've developed information so that after they have cleaned and greened what they can do, that they can contact the city council to fill potholes and remove stumps and repair broken sidewalks. So we are expanding to other Northeast communities, and thank you so much, Councilman.
Thank you. Thank you, Benita. Thank you, Benita. And now we save some great officers that we get to acknowledge today. If I can call up Councilmember Reyes, who hails from Hollenback and Northeast, in addition to Rampart and Hollywood and other places. Like to call the senior lead officers from Northeast Division and Hollenback Division. Please join me. Give them a big hand, everybody. These are the men and women in blue. Yeah, give them a big hand. Well, actually, they represent the men and women in blue. As you could see, they're all men. We made Steve stand in front because he's the tallest. Oh, we have a little joke. All right, that comes from the guy who's six foot five, right? As we all know, our budget is stretched very thin. And we're not able at this time to hire the new police officers that we need. And I'm very proud that this council stood firm and strong and united for the idea that we need to put on the ballot in November a half-cent sales tax that's dedicated to putting police officers on the streets of Los Angeles. Let the people decide. And we think they'll decide to support our police officers, ensure that we have more of them to keep our neighborhood safe and to ensure that El Surino has a satellite office. What's it called again? I can't hear you. A working satellite office. That's right. So I want to acknowledge, and we want to acknowledge, the senior lead officers. Because I can tell you, they've been at work on behalf of this great community for a long time. But in the last year, they've enjoyed incredible successes. This senior lead officer program helped to spearhead, you know, our effort to close down bars, problem bars, in the 14th Councilmatic District. We've closed down four of them, and we're going to close down a lot more in the coming months. These officers have worked here in El Surino to ensure that a crack cocaine house that disrespected this community for 20 years, 20 years, that no one could seem to find any way to do something about. Through the great work of these senior lead officers, City Attorney's Office, Building and Safety and the entire leadership family of the City of Los Angeles, including my office, we closed down that crack cocaine house. And it's an empty lot as we speak today. Yes, come on, let's do, give them a big hand for that. They've been a part of working in this neighborhood to identify the problem issues, urban blight, the issues that some police departments don't deal with. But these senior lead officers, working with my office and all of the city offices, and most importantly, with all of you. I want to acknowledge from Northeast Division, Officer Joe Galindo. Raise your hand, please. Ray Rangel, Ray Rangel. Mark Allen and Chris Cooper. Give them a big hand. From the Hollenback Division, we have Richard Rodriguez, Steve Morales, Austin Fernald, John Pedroza, Dan Rios, Oscar Cassini and Ruben Rodriguez. I'll tell you, you can't find a better bunch of men, a finer group of officers who understand. Even if we were to double this police force, the only way we're going to make our neighborhood safer is respecting our community, working with the men and women in our community to make our neighborhood safer. We want to acknowledge them, and I'd like to have Councilmember Reyes also say a few words as well.
Thank you, Councilman Villarogosa. It's always a pleasure and honor to share these recognitions. As we all know, crime doesn't know political boundaries. And as we all know, it is the help of yourselves, the community. There's a statistic that says for every one officer, there's 12 gang members. So bottom line is, we need your eyes, we need your ears, we need to make those calls. You need to let us know where it's happening, because these officers will be there for us. But we need to have a little bit of patience. With your support, we'll make a difference. So thank you very much. Thank you, Antonio, for allowing me to speak and recognize these great men and women in blue who are there for us. And thank you, community, for backing us up. Have a great day.
You know, Councilmember Reyes knows whenever you make a gaffe, you try to make it a plus. With us is the leader of this group, one of our great leaders, Sergeant Hernandez. Give him a big hand. Captain Fiero in the back, Deputy Chief. Deputy Chief Carter is also with us, our new Deputy Chief for Central. Acknowledge him. If I could take... Okay, our last acknowledgement. With us also is Captain Mo Smith from Northeast. Where are you, Cap? I know you're somewhere here. Is Captain Smith here? Also Captain Rupert from Central. And of course Patrol Captain Carol A. Born. Give her a big hand. Captain Smith, just come on up for a second. Captain Rupert, Deputy Chief Carter, Captain Fiero. I want you all to see our leadership team here in the 14th Councilmatic District. I guess Captain Smith was here? He's on vacation. And Captain Rupert had to go to another event. Captain, Chief Carter, would you like to say a word or two?
Yes, I just, I'm astounded. When I got here today, I have never seen such a large community meeting come out on a hot summer's evening. This is absolutely great. I applaud you. And I applaud the efforts that the Councilman is doing in this district, the senior lead officers that you just recognized. I want to let you know from my heart that they are making your community a much safer one with your assistance, but we need your help always. We need our community's help, working with the police, so that we can even make your community more safer. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Our new chief here in Central, our two captains. We're going to take a picture, yes. Thank you all. Our final presentation. Yes, there's a final presentation. Here we go. I'd like to ask Pastor Yu Sik Lee from the Los Angeles Christian Presbyterian Church to join me. Yes, give them a big applause, everybody. You're in his home. Pastor Lee and the... Pastor Kim. I want to thank you and congratulate you, and most importantly, the Los Angeles Christian Presbyterian Church. This is a new church, as churches go here in the community of El Sarino. And those of you who have had an opportunity to see the grounds, it's a beautiful, beautiful grounds, a beautiful church, a great congregation. This congregation played a very, very important role in our day of service with more than 800 people here in El Sarino, just around the block. And we want to thank them for their wonderful hospitality, for being such a great community partner. And most importantly, for hosting this year's Council District 14 Off-Site Council Meeting. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Young Jin Kim, the pastor of this church. We've been here for 20 years. And we are very pleased to host this special meeting. And we are part of this city. And we want to be a contribution to the benefit of the city and the neighbors. Enjoy your meeting tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. And again, it's such an honor to represent the community I was born and raised in, bought my first home. My mother was born here and raised here. My grandpa. This is a great community. And the people of Los Angeles get an opportunity to see, whether you live in El Sarino, or Boyle Heights, or Highland Park, or Eagle Rock, what we all have in common on this part of town is that we've been here, in many cases, for many, many generations. But whether we just got here or our families have been here for a long time, we care about our neighborhoods. We're willing to roll up our sleeves and make them better. We expect accountability from government and demand the best from our representatives. But we're willing to do our part as well. And so today, we acknowledge all of you. Give yourselves a big hand. Like to turn the microphone, or hand the microphone, metaphorically, to our great Council President Alex Padilla.
Thank you, Councilmember Villagosa. And congratulations to all of you for your much deserved recognition. At this time, I want to recognize the other members of the City Council who have the privilege of working with Councilmember Villagosa on a daily basis, starting on his left, Councilmember Wendy Grul. Let's welcome her. Councilmember Janice Hahn. Coming down to the front row here on my left and your right, Councilmember Martin Ludlow. Councilmember Cindy Misakowski. Councilmember Bernard Parks. Your neighboring Councilmember Ed Reyes. Councilmember Greg Smith. Councilmember Jack Weiss. Councilmember Dennis Zein. And then coming back up to the top level here on my far right is our Assistant City Attorney. Make sure that the council proceedings are all legal. Assistant City Attorney Deion O'Connell. Our Vote Clerk Julie Amanti. And our Council Clerk Maria Kostrensich. And let me ask them to perform their first official duty. Would you please call the roll?
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Labang, Lelo, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villagosa, Weiss, Zein, Padilla. Eleven members present. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That means we're officially in session. And a couple of just brief announcements before we get to the actual agenda today. For the benefit of the public, I want to announce that copies of this evening's agenda are available in the back of the room along with Council District contact information. And so you all know how the meeting is going to work tonight. The council is going to consider the items that are listed on the agenda in numerical order. We're going to consider them in batches or in groups of items. Some of the items may be approved without discussion. We call that consent. However, any item that's on the agenda can be called special by a council member and basically pulled from the agenda for special discussion. If an item is called special, it will be held and brought up for discussion one at a time after the remainder of the items on the agenda have been acted upon by the council. Any member of the public who wishes to speak on any of the items on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker card. There are speaker cards also in the back for each item that you wish to address the City Council on and present the completed card to the Sergeant-at-Arms. The council will also provide an opportunity for the public to speak on general public interest items, issues within the city's jurisdiction but that may not appear on today's agenda. Testimony shall be limited in content to matters within our jurisdiction. I want to emphasize that. When debate or discussion on any individual item is completed, I will ask the clerk to take an oral roll call vote. The vote shall be taken in alphabetical order. Every member present must vote for or against each item. There are no abstentions. And the clerk will announce the vote on each item. And for this evening's meeting, colleagues, as I think you've all come to know, since we don't have our computer system with us, if you wish to speak on an item, make eye contact with me, raise your hand, something to get my attention, and I'll keep track in the best, to the best of my ability. Mr. Parks, do you have your hand puppet? No, the hand puppet you brought with you.
No, no.
Okay. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Ludlow seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Villagosa moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, item number one is an item noticed for public hearing, and the applicant consents to a continuance to August 3, 2004.
Okay, members, request to continue item number one. Seeing no objection, item one is continued.
And also a request on item number two. The applicant consents to a continuance to September 29.
Okay, item number two, another request for continuance, also without objection. And for the members of the public who don't know what a continuance is, maybe we're agreeing to postpone it. We're not going to talk about it today. We're not going to act on it today. We're going to hear it again in a future meeting. Next item, please.
Item number three is a public hearing item, and that is a Budget Finance Committee report.
Okay, members, item number three now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearings open and closed. Any requests to call this item special? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on item number three.
Grul, Hahn, Misakowski, Parks, Reyes, Smith, Villagosa, Weiss, Zein, Padilla. Eleven eyes.
Okay, that item is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number four is a special presentation, and there is a card on the item.
Okay, let's call this item special, both to hear from a member of the public and also for a special presentation by the Los Angeles Police Department. Mr. Villagosa.
As the member of the public is approaching the microphone, I'd like to acknowledge Occidental College and Upper Bound here. Number of young students from Occidental College's Upper Bound Program who are here with us. Many of you know that Upper Bound is a great program to young people. It gives young people who may not have been able to get into a university on a regular admission process an opportunity to experience college. And many, many fine young graduates have come through there. They've helped out with today's event. I'd like to acknowledge them. Donnie Adlin's here, just celebrated his, I won't say how many years, but it's many, many. We want to acknowledge him as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villagosa. So we're holding item number four for a special presentation. Let's continue with consent items. Madam Clerk.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items five through 13.
Members, items five through 13 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Mr. Ludlow.
Testing, one, two, 13. Item 13.
13, we'll call that special for Mr. Ludlow.
Item 12, special.
12, called special by Mr. Villagosa.
Item 14.
14. We're almost there. But we'll note that Ms. Grul wants to call that special. Any other specials on items five through 13? Any other specials? Seeing none. Then on items five through 11, Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
Grul, Hahn, Misakowski, Parks, Reyes, Smith, Villagosa, Weiss, Zein, Padilla. Eleven eyes.
Okay, those items are approved. We're waiting on 12 and 13. Ms. Grul calls item 14 special. Next item, please.
And that would take council to items 14 through 30. 10 votes are required for consideration. Public hearing has not been held.
14 is called special by Ms. Grul, leaving items 15 through 30. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Those public hearings are open and closed. Other specials, Mr. Parks? 28, called special by Mr. Parks. Mr. Reyes? Any other specials, members? Items 15 through 30? Seeing none. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
And Mr. President, there is an amending motion on item number 28 that has been distributed to the council members.
That's been called special.
Okay.
Open the roll.
Grul, Hahn, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Reyes, Smith, Villagosa, Weiss, Zein, Padilla. Eleven eyes.
Those items are approved. Bringing us to item 31, which Mr. Reyes wishes to call special. And if that's the end of the consent items...
Yes, it is, Mr. President.
Then let's come back to item number 12, which we'll take out of order at the request of Mr. Villagosa.
Good evening. My name is Roger Snoble. I'm the CEO of the MTA. And thank you, Council President Padilla and members of the council. I'd like to particularly point out Councilmember Villagosa, who is a member of the Board of the MTA, and Councilmember Ludlow, who is also a member of the Board of the MTA. And I'd also like to just take a point of personal privilege and thank Councilmember Villagosa for his annual, one-year report and having the Watch the Road campaign specially put on the report because we feel this is an extremely important campaign to help save lives and injuries and property damage and congestion and pollution and everything else that goes with it. So, Councilmember, we thank you for recognizing this program. It's extremely important. Another very important thing that we are here to talk to you about today is a very, very large investment that we're about to make into this community. This is a $500 million construction project we have going. It's been many, many years in the making.
Mr. Snoble, I'm sorry for a second. Can you speak into the mic? I think they have it about as high as it could be. And we don't see, you're a little muffled there.
Okay, is that better?
Little better.
Okay, thank you. This project has been in the making for a very long time. It has enjoyed very good community support. And we're right on the verge of being able to really make it happen today. This slide is up because there is a very large federal contribution in dollars to the project. And those dollars are very hard to come by. We have been able to, through a lot of people's very hard work and support, be able to secure those federal dollars. And it's a great thing that we've been able to do that. A lot of people worked very hard on it. I would like to just very quickly point out a few people who have been instrumental. Councilmember Villagosa, of course, was very instrumental early on this year when we had to work very hard to get the state monies. And then again, he helped out very much when we had to go to Washington to get the monies from Washington. In addition, Supervisor Gloria Malina, Malina, who's also a member of the MTA Board, has worked very hard on this project for a very long time. And then you're very blessed with having a very super Congresswoman, Lucille Royball Allard, who's been working at the federal level along with the entire delegation who unanimously supported this project. So with all that hard work, we're finally able to get the money put together to really get this project going. On June 1st, the federal government finally approved the program. An hour after I got the call that it was approved, I signed the construction contract to move forward. So we are essentially underway and ready to go. Next slide, please. The project is the Metro Gold Line East Side Extension. It's a six-mile light rail line that's scheduled now to be opened in late 2009. It will consist of eight brand-new rail stations. Two stations will be underground, and they will be joined by two twin tunnels which will run for about 1.7 miles under Boyle Heights. This is an extension of the rail line that Councilmember Ed Reyes has worked very hard on, the Gold Line, that's in and operating, going from Union Station to Pasadena. So this will be an extension coming out of the Union Station, going into Boyle, or into Little Tokyo, on into Boyle Heights and into East Los Angeles. It's not only a major investment, but this gives us an opportunity also to give people in the community an opportunity to put their hands on such an important project. And as part of our commitment to the community, we are seeking employees qualified to work in the construction areas from the local area to actually participate in a construction project. I have brought with me tonight Joe Hernandez. Joe is right back here. If you are interested in working on this project, see Joe. He has brochures, and he's the person to see about being able to actually work on the project. The Metro Gold East Side Extension will enhance the travel experience for everybody on the east side that is traveling on the metro system. It'll greatly increase travel times, greatly add a great deal of new capacity, open up all kinds of new destinations, and become a destination for people all over Los Angeles. It's going along with all kinds of other very important work that's being done in the community that there's just an awful lot of new emerging things that are happening. And a lot of that is because of the catalyst of this very large investment, public investment that we are making into the, into the community. This slide just shows you, our last Saturday, we had a groundbreaking celebration. We had an intelligence test here. You can see that most everybody wore suits on a very hot day. Congressmember Villagosa was the smartest one and won the award because he came much more comfortable and stayed with us to enjoy...
Congressmember now, huh?
Oh, Congress... Councilmember, I'm sorry. And anyhow, we had a great, great day on Saturday, actually doing the groundbreaking for the East Side Extension. So it's underway and ready to go. We're going to be very much visible in the community. And to show you how much we are really involved in this, I've brought with us tonight the person who's actually going to build the line. That's Rick Thorpe. Rick was actually the person who built the Gold Line, the original part of the Gold Line. He's now come to us at the MTA and will head up our construction program so that we are making sure that this very large, very complicated project will work and work very well, work on time, and stay on budget. And so I'd like to ask Rick to come up to make a short presentation to you. Rick?
Thank you, Roger. Members of the council, really excited to work on this project. It's a great project. It's going to be wonderful for the community. I'd like to introduce a couple of people to the community. These are the people that are going to be managing the project, people you'll be seeing out in the field all the time. First of all, our project director, Dennis Mori. Dennis has been with MTA for 17 years, was the project manager on the very successful Hollywood subway line. And he will be the project director on this project. Another member, and a great pleasure to introduce, Councilman Villagosa. Another member that grew up here in El Sarino and going to be a key to our project management staff is Ray Sosa. Ray? Ray is going to be handling and working with the community to make sure that this construction project fits well within the community and minimizes any impact to business. construction project fits well within the community and minimizes any impact to business and residential areas. Along with that, I'd like to introduce Yvette Robles, who is going to be out in the community on a day-to-day basis, meeting with everybody, answering questions about the project. Oga Lopez, also out in the community every day, making sure that this project goes well within the community. We also, I think Roger mentioned, we're fortunate to have Joe Hernandez, who's going to be in charge of our Metro Jobs Program. And I'd like to talk about that in a little bit more, but before I do, we don't really build anything. We actually watch it be built. Takes contractors to actually build it. We're very fortunate to have a great contractor working on this project. It's actually a joint venture team of Washington International Group, Obiashi Corporation, and the Shimick Contractors. And here today is the project manager for the contractor, who's actually going to be the one building the project, Mike Aparicio. If we could have the next slide. We're doing something unique the first time for MTA. We're really excited about it, and what it is, we call it the Metro Jobs Program. Our goal is to make sure that 30% of all of the people working on the construction of this job come from the local community. One aspect of this is a Metro Jobs Program that will train people, anybody living within five miles of this project, and is interesting in working on this project, being trained to work on it. We have a program set up to train those individuals and try to find them jobs working on the project. It's a five-year project, and we're really excited about it. Alameda Corridor used it. It was very successful. We're looking forward to it as well. If we could have the next slide. It talks about the economic development. There's a lot of things happening right now in anticipation of the project. We have a lot of development going on along the line. This project is a $900 million project that's going to create 20,000 jobs within the LA area and another 27,000 indirect jobs. So basically, we're talking about this project infusing into the LA economy 47,000 jobs, and we're really excited about that. Next slide. Just a little bit about the project. Roger mentioned it, six miles connecting to the existing Pasadena Gold Line, $900 million project. Next slide. The project, when it's complete, you'll be able to ride from Atlantic Pomona to Union Station in 17 minutes, and you'll be able to connect over 70 miles of metro rail at that time. It's going to take us about five years to construct before we'll have it open. We're looking forward to a late 2009 opening of the project. Next slide. Some of the artist renderings, as Roger mentioned, we have two underground stations, one at Boyle Heights, Mariachi Plaza, and the other one at Soto. Some pictures of what it might look like when it's completed. Next slide. I think Roger also mentioned, we have one section along First Avenue is going to be underground, and we'll be boring two tunnels in that area. We're using state-of-the-art earth-pressure-balanced machines to do that tunneling, make sure that we don't have any settlement in the area. Next slide. Just a little about where we stand. As Roger indicated, the same day we got the full funding grant agreement from the federal government, we issued the contractor a notice of award, and in July, this last beginning of this month, we issued notice to proceed, which means, again, that we should be under construction, well under construction, by the end of this year, and you'll start seeing a lot of major construction going on at that time. Next slide. We were anticipating this project, and we're able to complete all the major utility relocation, and that work has been completed, so allows the contractor to come in and get started on the project right away. Next slide. Just a little bit about what to expect. First thing is, the contract will be mobilizing over the next month. You'll start to see fencing barricades go up, demolition of building sidewalks in preparation of the major construction. And then the big construction starts in the Boyle-Mariachi area, First Street, with the soldier pile installation, so we can get ready for the tunnel boring machines. Next slide. Finally, I'd just like to say that we have a couple of things that we're working with the city of LA on. One is the widening of First Avenue Bridge. We are also working with Caltrans. They have advertised the widening of the 101 freeway, and we'll be building the bridge over 101 for us that will tie into Union Station. Next slide. And that really concludes things. We look forward to everybody riding the project when we get it done and serving the citizens of East LA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Mr. Thorpe, Mr. Snobel, there are a lot of hard-working people here in El Sarino and Highland Park, Boyle Heights, downtown, and we're going to want to make sure that these people can work on this project. And as you know, there's a component here that's going to connect people in our neighborhoods, be able to work on this line. Who are the people that they would contact to do that?
Joe Hernandez is here.
Joe Hernandez, everybody. This is going to be an $890 million project. We need... We have construction experts here. We have people that are laborers and carpenters and plumbers and all of the things that come with that. Here in El Sarino, Boyle Heights, we're going to be working with you to ensure that the fine people sitting in this room and their children have an opportunity to work on this line. I want to thank you. I want to thank council member Ludlow, council member Labange, and Mayor Han, because Mayor... all three of them are members of the MTA Board. Y'all need to thank Gloria Molina as well, and Lucille Royball-Allard, our congressmember, because together, all of us delivered this project when nobody thought we could. These fine people were part of the effort to do that. This is going to be the part of more than $2 billion investment. Let me tell you how. This is $890 million, $325 million investment at White Memorial Hospital, the expansion, $70 million new police headquarters for Hollenbach Division, somewhere in the neighborhood of a $200 million private sector-public sector partnership at Sears Roebuck, a billion-dollar investment at LA County USC Hospital, hopefully 8,500 jobs being created with the Biotech-Biomed Research Center at LA County USC, under the leadership of USC, that I was involved with when I was out of office. There's going to be a lot of investment in this community. This community's going to grow, but we want to make sure that they're working on these projects and benefiting from them as well. I want to thank you for your presentation. Appreciate all of you being here today. Ms. Thorpe?
Council member, just one last thing. We do have a brochure on our jobs program, so anybody that's interested here tonight can come see Joe. Joe's got a stack of brochures, shows you how to apply for our jobs program. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Before you go away, Mr. Zine has a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. You mentioned the eastern portion. We've got a western portion. And there's a court decision that came out regarding that western portion, concern of the project continuing, as we know that it's already in progress along the east-west corridor from the red line to Warner Center. There's a concern about the parking structures that are planned for the area, starting at Warner Center and continuing down through the eastern section, the orange line, which people in the San Fernando Valley have concern about that project moving forward with the situation occurred in court. And I understand that the court said the EIR wasn't acceptable. They're not stopping the project at this time, but if a order was directed by the court to stop while they're in mid-face construction and road have been reduced in width to accommodate construction, there's a concern in the community, in my district and the third district, and I'm sure the other council members who represent San Fernando Valley have the same concern about this court decision that came down regarding what is referred to as the orange line. And then the second issue is, and Mr. Snobel and I had a brief discussion about the name, there was no input from the San Fernando Valley Neighborhood Council, Chambers of Commerce, homeowner groups, property organizations, anyone, to my knowledge, regarding the name. I know the name's gone through some different changes, but the local buses, I understand, are being painted orange. And people get confused sometimes with the color of the bus and the fact that it's called the orange line, and it's in the San Fernando Valley, and they may end up somehow in Orange County. Because I remember an individual wanting to go to Oakland, ended up in Auckland, because he took the wrong plane. And we don't want someone to get on the bus to go to the San Fernando Valley, ended up in Orange County. So, two questions. The court decision, what takes place between now and the time it's decided if this project can continue? Or could there be an injunction placed on the project and put on hold, which is going to cause massive congestion and problems for the people of the West San Fernando Valley? And secondly, on the name, the people of the valley need to be considered, their input has to be considered, for the name that, I understand, was brought forward and approved to call it the orange line. Prior to that, it was called the east-west valley transitway or something. It's gone through a couple of generations. How solid are they on that? And how can we appeal to the MTA Board to reconsider and to get some input from the communities of the San Fernando Valley, since they're directly impacted by this issue? And if you try to go out to the valley, you're only going to find oranges in a supermarket because you don't have any more orange groves in the San Fernando Valley. They're long gone. So if you could please answer those, gentlemen. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, council member Zine. This... We've put into the court case, the appellate court, this is the basic court, found in favor of the EIR, so they said it was okay. It was appealed to the appeals court. The appeals court said, "MTA, you did everything right, but there is one thing that you should have considered, and that's looking at some other rapid buses." But they didn't put a restraining order, they didn't put an injunction against it, they just said, "Please consider that." What we are recommending tomorrow to our board of directors is that they go ahead and appeal that decision to a higher court, but in the meantime, prepare the environmental documents according to what the court has ordered. In case it doesn't go farther on appeal, we'll have the work underway to be able to comply with that order.
And regarding that, are we on schedule, behind schedule, ahead of schedule, on that east-west project?
We are technically, from a schedule standpoint, somewhat behind schedule, but there is an acceleration plan to be able to finish it in August of 2005. And so that is still the official date we think we can catch up with that. And thank you to the city of Los Angeles, who's just been absolutely great working with us, and your office and council member Labange's office for really helping us to catch up on that schedule. It's been really very good. So we're moving ahead. It's still... Construction's following full speed ahead, and we expect that to continue, and we'll fight the battle in the legal sector as we best can.
And you do know that the great inconvenience to the people in that community, where Owens Mouth has been blocked off due to the transit hub that's being built, the inconvenience to the motorists, to the businesses. And there's a lot of people impacted in a negative fashion during their construction, which is understandable. And if it's put on hold due to the court who comes... that comes up with another decision, say, "Well, we got to sit here and analyze and do another EIR," whatever, and now you've got a project that is in the middle of... I don't know what percentage you would say is complete. I know they have curaway in some of the areas, some of the areas they've already dug out, but it would really be a catastrophe for the motorists of the San Fernando Valley to have that project abandoned at the point that it is and the progress that they've made to this point. So I know that legally, the MTA Board has to do what they have to do, but the impact on the community with the night construction, with the weekend construction, with the roadway reduction, has had a tremendous impact on Victory, which obviously is a major corridor for east-west transportation across the valley.
And we certainly understand that, because it is 40% completed. There are currently about seven intersections, partially or fully shut down at the moment. And if such a situation were to arise, we would appeal very strongly to the court to allow us to put it back in a safe position. In fact, I think we'd be required to put it back in a safe condition so that we would take care of those things before the actual work shut down. But like, again, we are very optimistic that we can get through this without having to delay the project.
And then I know that was delayed for the court, from the court decisions and the litigation that's been filed over the years. And we get to this point, and I thought, you know, there was clear sailing until this decision came out. The other question, Roger, is the issue of the name of that particular transitway.
The name is up to the board of directors. The name was presented to them, and they voted. I believe the vote was unanimous, but I'd have to check on that. If the community is not pleased with that name and would like to have further input, you can do so through the Sector Council, San Fernando Valley Sector Council might be a way to really start that ball rolling. They have a direct communication to the board or work through the board representatives of the MTA.
Was there any input from the San Fernando Valley residents, chambers, neighborhood councils? Was there any input from any groups in the San Fernando Valley? Because I know you have been to events with me in the community explaining the process, the progress, et cetera. Pierce College, we had other meetings where the community was informed. Was there any kind of community input on this name change?
Not anything other than just our board meeting.
Okay. So I think it would be appropriate that we would have them have at least some input as to their... some suggestions.
Yes, sir. And I will bring that up to our board chairman, just to put him on notice that something might be coming forward.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
In addition to that, as you know, you have three council representatives on that board, and we've been more than happy to raise these concerns at the board level on your behalf.
Thank you.
Because these are questions that need to be answered.
See, I'm concerned that... excuse me, that there was no community input, and we keep on talking about community input, and apparently there was none.
Thank you.
To be continued. Thank you, gentlemen, for your report. We can note and file item number twelve.
There is a committee report before the council. Do you wish to take a vote on that?
Let's open the roll.
Grul, Han, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Reyes, Smith, Veragosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla. Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is approved. And colleagues, as I mentioned, since the council will stand in recess next week, that all matters approved today will go forth with. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number four was called special for a card from the public, and there is a special presentation.
Okay. Let's hear first from Hugo Pacheco on item number four, and then we will...
As Mr. Pacheco is coming to the microphone, Mr. President, I'd like to claim or exercise personal privilege and acknowledge one of El Sarino's youngest, most vibrant residents, Ruth Swiget, 101 years young. She's a wonderful, wonderful representative here in El Sarino. We love her. Let me tell you, I don't care if your name is Art Snyder or Antonio Veragosa, she's pulled the ear of every council member who's represented this area during her time and has held every single one of them accountable, and we want to thank you, Ruth Swiget, for all your work. If our mobile camera here, if you could take a picture of this beautiful woman, and she's standing next to one of our golden girls, who we love so much, can we get the camera here on Ruth Swiget? She is 101 years young, living more than six decades here in El Sarino. They even named a street after her.
They even named a street after her.
There she is, there she is.
There she is. Isn't she beautiful? And please, everyone here, don't think for a moment that if she has something to say, she won't say it. She's one of our great leaders. Thank you so much, Ms. Swiget.
Mr. Pacheco.
Yes, my name is Hugo Pacheco. I actually live in 90032, but somehow because of the gender mandarin that occurs at City Hall, I belong to CD1. So somehow, on one neighborhood council, I would never be listened by one councilman, and I probably wouldn't be listened by the other councilman because I happen to belong in one of those weird areas where somehow you don't exist. But anyway, what I wanted to talk about was the courage that I think that is shown on the part of some people to be able to find out how alcohol affects our community. So that I applaud this program that they're trying to find out how that alcohol affects us. As a Hispanic area manager for two major breweries, I can tell you that alcoholism in the Hispanic community is terrible. And yet, we find that CRA and this council has decided to support a beer and wine sales project within, right next to, an elementary school, a high school, a convent, and a preschool. And I would hope that people would come up and give their opinion about the fact that we want more studies relative to the dangers of alcohol to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Let me turn it over to Mr. Verigosa for the staff presentation.
Yes, and as we do that, Council President, my understanding, I've just been informed that about 783 people signed in today. Let it be known that the 14th Councilmanic District has a lot of people who care. Thank you all for being here. There are a number of people out there. I'd like to, 784.
Because Labange's got...
Let us acknowledge that the great council member from the 4th Councilmanic District, Mr. Los Angeles, who knows El Serino and every community, is here present with us. Give him a big hand, Tom Labange. Unfortunately, just so you know, had other pressing business today. If I can call up Effie Turnbull, Raquel Perez, Sergeant Andrew Reyes, or Captain, and/or Captain William Fierro, for item number four.
Thank you. Beginning of the year, we realized that Hollenbeck has far too many ABC licenses. And around those different establishments, we realized that we have a tremendous problem with our aggravated assaults, our crimes, and we decided we had to do something about it. So, along with the city attorney, my vice unit has decided to go ahead and we focused on the main bars and, along with the city council's office and ABC, we were able to make some very big headway into eliminating these bars and going after them and getting penalties and being able to shut them down. I'm going to go ahead and let my Sergeant Andy Reyes speak and the city attorney, but the partnership and working together on combating these bars and locations in Hollenbeck has been a tremendous plus to the community in terms of crime and the reduction of crime. Andy?
First of all, on behalf of Hollenbeck Vice, I'd like to thank Antonio for this opportunity and this recognition. I appreciate it, and my officers do as well.
Thank you.
As a vice OIC for Hollenbeck Division, what I've done is, I've facilitated a lot of entities that have collectively come together to help support not only my mission and the support that I've gotten from my command staff, but also listening to the public, listening to their concerns and their quality of life issues. This has been a unique venture for myself, growing up in Hollenbeck Division. So what I've done is, I've been able to get on board with Hollenbeck Vice, is ABC Metro Division, ABC Special Operations Unit. Now, this is a selective unit designed specifically to come into locations within Hollenbeck Division and work in an undercover capacity and assist Hollenbeck Vice so that we can curtail some of these quality of life issues. I've also been able to effectively bring in the Labor Standards Board, EETF, the Fire Department, our Hollenbeck Division Narcotics, FES, Field Enforcement Section. And as of yesterday, I've been, I've had the great opportunity working with IRS. IRS has contacted me, they want to jump on board, and they want to go after these bars as well, as well as liquor stores. I have over 320 off-sale and on-sale liquor establishments. As of November of last year, given this task, I've been able to close...
Sergeant, would you, for our listeners again, give us the number of liquor establishments in this community?
322.
In Hollenbeck Division alone?
In Hollenbeck Division alone.
That's not northeast, everybody. That's just one division. So that's Boyle Heights, that's El Serino, that's a portion of Lincoln Heights as well.
Correct. During my venture since November of 2003, I've been able to shut down, shut down three bars, bars that have effectively affected the quality of life issues within Hollenbeck Division. I'm currently working on my fourth and my fifth, and with the help of the city attorney's office, who has been instrumental in coming together and working with LAPD, this wouldn't have been able to happen. What I've done is, I've identified 10 problem locations within Hollenbeck Division, talking to officers, and talking to you. And within those 10 locations, I only have four officers to work with, four officers that have come in on a daily routine, and we go after these bars. Of these 10 locations, I have serious violations in all 10. I have violations that are still pending that will shut these places down for a minimum of 30 days. Again, that is on the administrative side with ABC, and on the criminal side, we are still looking at some prosecutions that are ongoing. I've also been able to effectively receive a grant from ABC, and this is the first of its kind within Hollenbeck Division. Actually, this is the first of its kind within the Los Angeles Police Department. Los Angeles Police Department for the last nine years has been receiving $100,000 grant from ABC to enforce ABC violations. And this is the first time in the nine years that a divisional jurisdiction, Hollenbeck Division, has been awarded a grant of $25,000 for my officers to work on an overtime basis. So with that, you know, I thank you again very much, and again to the city attorney's office. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Sergeant Reyes. You know, folks, yes, give him a big hand. Before, when I first was sworn in about a year ago, many of you said back then that you are tired of the problem bars and the liquor stores in our community. And I sat down with Captain Fierro early on, and with some of his officers, and we brought in the city attorney's office. We identified a number of those bars that we were going to hold accountable for the disrespect and the lawlessness, the criminal activity that has occurred at these sites. And for my council colleagues, when you hear the number 424 liquor establishments, there aren't a whole lot of communities, though there are some others, there aren't a whole lot of communities that have that number of liquor establishments. And these great people here in this community deserve better than that. And that's why I want to thank Sergeant Reyes, Captain Fierro, and of course, the city attorneys who are going to also make a presentation, because we're making good on our promise to clean up these liquor stores, or these bars rather, to hold them accountable and to close them down if necessary. So, thanks to Sergeant Reyes. Yes, give him a big hand to Sergeant Reyes. Now, one of our city attorneys, I'll tell you, she's new to the east side, but she's just great. We love her. She's full of energy. She's been a big partner here, Effie Turnbull. You may present.
Thank you, council member. I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of our office for inviting us to come before the residents and present on our activities in terms of abating nuisance activities at problem bars in the Hollenbeck area. And without the assistance of your office and your incredible staff, along with the office of Councilmember Reyes and the office of the Speaker of the Assembly, Fabian Nunez, we would not have been able to have the success that we have had thus far. I am the civil abatement attorney. I am the civil abatement neighborhood prosecutor for the Hollenbeck area. I work within the Safe Neighborhoods Division of the Office of the City Attorney under the leadership of City Attorney Rocky Delgadoio, and I am supervised directly by Mary Claire Molitor, who is the chief of the Safe Neighborhoods Division, along with Assistant Supervising Attorney Rita Venegas.
Yeah.
Both of whom are here tonight.
Big hand for Rita Venegas.
As Sergeant Reyes mentioned and the council member mentioned, we have been working in a collaborative effort to make proactive changes in the east Los Angeles area and the Hollenbeck Division. Thus far, we have had success in closing four out of the 10 bars that we have identified at the beginning of the year. Three of these are more permanent closures, and one of them was a more temporary closure. When you consider how long it typically takes to close these bars, it's an incredible feat to know that we had the cooperative efforts of the council member and the community members, members such as Angela Biorkas, who's behind me, who, through her courageous efforts, we were able to get several of these bars closed. I just wanted to give a brief presentation on these four locations that we were able to close, starting with the bar called Mi Bada located at 138 North San Fernando Road. This location was closed for alcohol sales recently, July 1st of this year. This location was the site of numerous illegal activities, narcotics transactions, sales of alcohol to minors, and other criminal activities. LAPD, along with our office, notified ABC of these continuing violations, and I began to prepare a civil abatement action as a contingency plan if the ABC allegations did not stick. Fortunately, I didn't have to file the criminal action, and ABC was able to revoke the license. Unfortunately, though, this was one of the cases that had slipped through the cracks, but for the attention of Sergeant Reyes and our office and the community members, it would not have been closed. The second location that I wanted to briefly speak about is the El Prado Bar. Many of you have heard about this bar. It has received a lot of press coverage. It's located at 3144 East First Street. This location has been closed since January of this year. And if you'll recall, for those of you who are familiar with it, this is the location where the owner of the bar died approximately five years ago, and the family of the owner fraudulently renewed the ABC licenses and police permits at the location. Eventually, after the LAPD and our office brought these fraudulent activities to the attention of ABC and CID, the permits were revoked. The city attorney then called the family members in for an office hearing whereby we were asking the family members what their future proposal was for the site. And unfortunately, they attempted to appease the community by offering a proposal whereby they would operate a recreation and community center by day out of the bar for children and operate business as usual in the evening times with sales of alcohol. We immediately informed them that this proposal was unacceptable to our office and terminated the city attorney hearing. We are now awaiting pending results from CID and ABC. If the El Prado is permitted to reopen, we are prepared to file civil action against the location. The third location is Casa Rodriguez located at 2907 East First Street. This, again, has been the site for numerous narcotics sales, transactions, assaults, illegal sales of alcohol, et cetera. This is the location whereby we worked with the California State Department of Employment and Development to get workers' compensation violation citations at the location, and also the city attorney's office filed a cease and desist order preventing them from operating. This bar has been closed since March of 2004. The last location, Eleon de Oro, was temporarily closed this spring. They have since reopened, but business has been relatively quiet. And again, if the nuisance activities resume, we are prepared to file an action. Again, I'd like to thank the community for their assistance in this effort, and I'd like to now turn the mic over to my colleague, my counterpart in Hollenbeck, the Criminal Neighborhood Prosecutor, Raquel Perez, who is going to be talking about the vertical prosecution efforts that she's been engaged in to abate and prevent misdemeanor violations.
Another great city attorney, Raquel Perez.
Good evening. My name is Raquel Perez, and I'm assigned to the Neighborhood Prosecutor Program, Hollenbeck Division. And I'm here tonight to provide a brief update on the criminal prosecutions at the nuisance bar locations and liquor stores in Hollenbeck. Over the last six months, I have prosecuted approximately 40 criminal cases. Of those 40 cases, 17 have been sent to the city attorney's office, hearing office. And essentially, that means that these individuals did not have any criminal records. The hearing officer will advise the individual that their conduct is criminal and will warn that repeated conduct will result in a criminal filing. Of those 17 cases, all involved purchasing alcohol for minors. The remaining 23 cases that I have prosecuted are divided into three categories. The first category is selling alcohol to minors, the second, serving alcohol to obviously intoxicated individuals, and the third, soliciting alcohol. The majority of these cases are open cases with ongoing prosecutions. One has resulted in a conviction by a jury. We have two guilty pleas, two bench warrants, and one dismissal. And again, the remaining cases are open. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, let's give them a big hand. And our community members who are present, let me tell you, it's been, and they're not making a presentation, it's been the community members who have stepped forward, who've had the courage to challenge the drug dealers, the gang members, the people who have engaged in criminal activity at these bars. And they've stepped forward, worked with our police department, worked with the city attorney's office, and my staff, been phenomenal. Want to acknowledge Councilmember Reyes, who'd also like to say a few words.
I just want to take a moment and thank the city attorney's office, the LAPD, Building and Safety, all community folks. Mi Bada has been a real, how can I put this? It's like a cancer in our community. It's off of San Fernando Road and passing the avenue of Lincoln Heights. So we thank you for helping us bring that down. And I know we're working on Club Latino, and that's almost there, so, that's in the Pico Union area, so I believe we're two or three bars that we're going after, and it's with your hard work, so thank you, the city attorney's office. So thank you, the city attorney's office, LAPD, and everyone else has been part of this process, especially the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Reyes. And I want to mention, it was mentioned, but we have to acknowledge Speaker Fabian Nunez, who directed, there's a $100,000 grant that goes for ABC work at the LAPD for the whole city. But working with our office and council and Speaker Nunez offices, we got a $25,000 special grant just for Hollenbeck to focus on bars here in El Surino. We can't name them all right now, I understand, so I won't. But I'm gonna tell you, everybody who lives around here, you know which ones they are. And we're closing them down very soon. I can tell you that, and it's because of the great work of these fine people. Thank you all so much.
Other members wishing to be heard and decided? Are there any further questions? If not, Madam Crook, we can note and file this report?
Yes, Mr. President.
Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special by Councilmember Ludlow.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Council President Padilla. First, colleagues, let me extend a heartfelt thank you to Councilmember Antonio Viragosa. It's been a great night for the city council. Let's give him and his staff a round of applause. It's been a great, great evening. And always fitting, we also want to acknowledge, because many of you who are watching this on TV don't realize how much work goes into this, not only by Councilmember Viragosa's staff, but by the great staff of ITA. And I don't know if you can do it, but can you guys show each other on the camera? You guys do this every time we have this council night. It's a late night for you guys. You guys are gonna be here hours and hours after we leave. And take me off the screen, see if you can get your colleagues on there. We want to give you a round of applause and let everybody out there in the public see you guys. Can you do it? Yeah, there they are. Give them a round of applause. Long after we're asleep and knocked out tonight in bed, these guys are gonna still be up hoisting cable and putting it into trucks and taking it back downtown. So we really appreciate what you all do. Colleagues, this this item, item 13, I want to encourage you to take a close look and support it. And I want to thank Councilmember Viragosa for seconding this motion. As you know, the tourism industry has a large impact on the economy here in Los Angeles. It represents a $24 billion industry. And the hotel industry has been steadily making rebounds since the attacks of 9/11. We want to take a moment to acknowledge and appreciate the work of the people at LA Inc. and all of the people in the tourism industry that have been working day in and day out to try to turn the tide back into the favor of Los Angeles and trying to encourage people to come from around the world to utilize Los Angeles as one of their top international tourist destination points. But unfortunately, colleagues, the hotels in Los Angeles are currently not having the success that we would like to see them have with respect to the dynamic that their workers are facing. In fact, we held a joint hearing in my committee, Conventions Tourism Entertainment, with the Housing Community Economic Development Committee. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Garcetti for co-sponsoring that hearing. And the information that came out in that hearing was rather chilling. What makes it most chilling is not only what came out in that discussion, but the fact that right now, Los Angeles is on the brink of another major labor strike. We have just lived through the MTA bus strike, which was debilitating for workers and families throughout Los Angeles. We just came through a grocery industry strike, which was debilitating for not only the workers, but the people who relied on the grocery industry for their food and and materials and supplies. And we are now very seriously looking at the potential for the hotel industry to face yet another strike. And there's no reason for this strike. In this hearing, what we saw were some amazing statistics about how the industry is rebounding and the profits and the types of things that you'd want to see after such a devastating attack. But this motion that I introduced along with Councilmember Viragosa is to support a state bill, AB 606, which is the Humane Treatment of Hotel Room Attendance Act of 2004. And essentially, what it says is that those individuals who work in the industry to make sure that the industry puts on the best face possible for the tourists and business leaders who come from out from around the world, that those individual workers get the same level of treatment, the same level of respect and dignity that we are pushing them to afford to the customers and the patrons. And colleagues, I would offer to you that the information that came out in the hearing was very challenging. And I will just wrap up with this. Many of the workers are being asked to take pay cuts for items that may be broken or come up missing in the hotel. Many workers are being forced to double the number of rooms that they are supposed to clean now versus the number of rooms that they were supposed to clean two years ago. And the information was very clear. It's because the industry is trying to make a rebound and maintain its profits, but not expand the workers to an adequate level to accommodate the increase in tourists that are coming to Los Angeles. And so what we want to do with this motion is ask that you support Speaker Fabian Nunez in passing AB 606. And keep in mind the civil rights movement when you vote on this item. The civil rights movement was there to fight to guarantee workers an eight-hour day, a 40-hour work week, health and safety standards. And the workers who make these hotels work here in Los Angeles, they deserve the same treatment that the guests that they work so hard to bring back to the city. They need the same level of treatment that those employees get. Guests don't see the CEO, they don't see the stockholders, but they all meet the maid. And so let's support the maids, let's support the workers. I ask for an "I" vote on item 13. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Before recognizing the next speaker on this, members, even though a public hearing has been held in committee, let me take a point of personal privilege here to reopen the public hearing and ask Mariana Durazo, who's here on behalf of the union, as well as Maria Mihangos and Gemma Santos, if you wanted to say a few words.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing us to have a few minutes.
Pueden pasar nomás decir su nombre?
Mi nombre es Victoria Vergara y trabajo en el Hotel Bonaventura por 15 años.
Mi nombre es María Cruz y trabajo en el Sunrise por dos años.
Mi nombre es Margarita Rubio y trabajo cinco años en el Regent Beverly Wilshire.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Moran, and I work in Westin Bonaventure for the housekeeping department. I worked there for seven years.
Okay.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Mihangos y trabajo en el Billmore por nueve años.
¿Lo digo todo?
Okay.
Ya dije.
Como tres, cuatro franceses y dos para otro.
Okay.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Mihangos y trabajo en el Billmore por nueve años de recamadera.
Good evening. My name is María Mihangos. Mihangos, and I've worked at the Billmore for about nine years as a housekeeper.
Nosotros las recamaderas necesitamos protección de trabajo. A veces podemos tomar los descansos como debe de ser.
As room attendants, what we're asking is to be able to give us the breaks, the breaks that have to given to any employee.
Desde el 9 de septiembre, como para nosotros, los trabajadores, eso no se nos olvida porque los empleadores lo agarran como excusa para darnos sobrecarga de trabajo.
Since 9/11, us as workers, we don't forget about that event because the employers use that as an excuse to give us an overload of work.
Nosotros las recamaderas hacemos un trabajo muy duro y merecemos un descanso como dice la ley.
And the room attendants, we work very hard and we deserve a break, such as stated by law.
No solo sobrecargo de trabajo. Ahora, yo soy una madre soltera y ahora tenemos que pagar la seguridad de nuestros hijos.
It's not only overworked, but also, I'm a single mother, and we also have to work for our children, we have to pay for our children's health insurance.
Recuerdo muy bien una de mis compañeras, a veces no podía comer en todo el día por la sobrecarga de trabajo.
I remember very clearly about one of my coworkers, sometimes she was not able to eat due to the overload of work that was assigned to us.
Pero yo un día que se enfermó y la despidieron. No le valieron los 15 años de trabajo que hizo ahí en el hotel.
But one day she got sick and she got fired because of that. It didn't matter that she had been working at that hotel for 15 years.
Por la presión de sobrecargo de trabajo, la despidieron. En nombre de todas las recamaderas de Los Ángeles, les pedimos que apoyen la ley propuesta del asambleísta Fabian Nunez. Gracias.
Due to this pressure of overwork that was given to this worker, she was fired. Therefore, in the name of all of the room attendants, we ask you to please support the bill from Assemblyman Fabian Nunez.
Mi nombre es Gemma Santos. He trabajado por casi 15 años en el Hotel Wilshire Grand. Y he estado deshabilitada desde el pasado mes de octubre debido a lesiones causadas por el trabajo.
Good evening. My name is Gemma Santos. I've worked almost for 15 years at the Wilshire Grand Hotel, and I've been disabled during the last month, during the month of October due to injuries sustained at work.
Ser una recamadera es un trabajo muy duro empezando porque tenemos que buchar el carro con el material todo el día, que pesa 200 libras o más.
Being a room attendant is very difficult work, starting with the fact that we have to push the cart full of material all day, and this car can weigh up to 200 pounds or more.
Nos asignan 15 cuartos diariamente. El tiempo que nos toma limpiarlos es de 25 a 30 minutos aproximadamente. Y esto, y hacemos de 20 a 30 camas diariamente, sin contar los cuartos excesivamente sucios, donde hay roadways, y tenemos que mover maletas para poder hacer camas.
Donde hay basura arreglada por todos lados, mejas pegajosas y espejos muy sucios. Tenemos cafeteras que normalmente nos toman mucho tiempo limpiarlas.
They assign about 15 rooms to us daily, and it takes us about 25 to 30 minutes approximately to clean each room. And we have to also make about 20 to 30 beds without counting the rooms that are extremely dirty and the ones that also have rollaway beds where there's enough space. We also have to move the luggage in order to be able to make the beds. And when there's a lot of trash spread all over the room, we also have to clean it. Sometimes the mirrors are full of cream and hairspray. The tables and the dressers are sticky with soda residue. We also wash the coffee makers regularly, and it takes us a long time to be able to clean that.
Tenemos que hacer eso porque si no terminamos, nos dan un warning, y tampoco podemos quedarnos después de las 4 de la tarde a terminar nuestro trabajo porque no quieren pagar horas extras.
We have to do that because if we don't do that, they will give us a warning. And also, we cannot stay after 4 o'clock. If we stay over after 4 o'clock, they will not pay us overtime to be able to finish our work. Because they want to pay us overtime.
Para mí, en vez de agradecermelo, me presionaban y terminé lesionándome la espalda. Tengo dos discos desviados y una vértebra de la columna debido a una caída. Aún así, seguí trabajando con mucho dolor, y ellos me pagaron despidiéndome.
Instead of them appreciating the fact that I was working this hard, they would pressure me more. And what happened is I ended up injuring my back. I have two dislocated discs in my vertebrae. Also, what they did is due to a fall, I have a lot of pain, but I still continue to work with a lot of pain. And thanks to that, the way they pay me back is by firing me.
Por eso es muy importante aprobar la ley, AB 606. Muchas gracias.
That's why it's very important to support the bill, 606. Thank you.
Members of council, we appreciate you taking the time to listen. This is the most important testimony. There's nothing that I could add to this because what they have said is what they go through every single day. They represent the experiences of thousands of housekeepers that make tourism so important, bring so much revenue to the city of Los Angeles. And I want to thank the members of council, Councilman Ludlow Villarigosa, and everyone. Thank you for your support.
Mr. Viragosa?
Very proud in the 14th Councilmanic District to have a leader like Mariano Durazo, a leader who has been the voice for hotel workers, but a voice for Los Angeles that understands that a great city is a city where we honor work. We honor the people who work hard and play by the rules. Many of us enjoy the comforts of a nice hotel. And what we forget is that many of the people that work in those hotels could never afford to go to a hotel. They oftentimes can barely afford to pay rent. Unless they're in a union, they don't have health care more often than not. Their kids are in schools that are among the least successful anywhere in the city. They live in some of the neighborhoods that have the highest crime rates. What this legislation attempts to do is speak to the time-honored tradition in this great country that says, when you work hard and you play by the rules, you should be able to enjoy the American dream. This is an $11 billion industry, an industry that has done very well and is gonna do better in the coming years. Councilmember Ludlow and myself have, are asking your support for this legislation because we believe that it's not mutually inconsistent or mutually exclusive to support the idea that we need to bring commerce and create wealth in Los Angeles, but also build a middle class, support homeownership, ensure that our children and the people that work in this great industry have health care. And we know that the best vehicle for that in this industry and many other low-wage industries has been a union. I thank the hotel and restaurant workers for being here. I thank all of the service attendants who work at the hotels, who provided testimony today. We know that you represent the best of Los Angeles. You have helped to create the wealth of this great city. You deserve, because of your hard work, to benefit from that wealth creation. And all you're asking for is human decency. All you're asking for is support of a basic notion in this great country that says, when you work hard and you play by the rules, you should be able to benefit from that hard work. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you, Mr. Viragosa. Other members wishing to be heard? If not, then let me just add, as a son of an HRE member, my support for this motion, this resolution to support the Nunez bill in Sacramento. And colleagues, I'm just trying to offer it in the following perspective, to echo Mr. Ludlow's comments, to echo Mr. Viragosa's comments. Over the years, we have heard of the plight of farmworkers out in the field and the basics that they have fought so hard for. A break after every several hours' work, decent humane conditions, not only for work, but something as simple as being able to use a restroom and to have access to drinking water. In recent years, we've heard of a plight of employees at racetracks and other horsekeeping-related industries and some of the deplorable conditions that they've had to endure, those workers with minimal minimal pay. Well, somehow, it has not been on the radar or not been a priority of lawmakers to afford the same concern, the same attention, the same protections, if you will, to the employees of some of the finest hotelists. the finest hotel establishments in the country and in the world. And I think it's long time that if the hotel managers and operators aren't going to do it on their own, that government does intervene in this case to help, to help those employees, to help those people, as has been said, who work hard and play by the rules, are in pursuit of nothing else but the American dream and the opportunities that come with that. So, colleagues, I speak in favor of this resolution as well and ask for your support. Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to also add that in my district, more than half of the communities are living aderent poverty, meaning folks are at $17,000 a year for a family of four. Just a few weeks ago, we learned that the median house price in the Allee County is $415,000. When we know that for a one-bedroom apartment in my district, you're spending about $1,300 to $1,800 for a one-bedroom apartment unit. So, we start putting this all together, and you find out how much the hotel workers are actually making, how many hours they're working, and how much more is being pulled from them. Because now they are traveling long distances. They can't afford a vehicle, so they're taking the bus. And so, it begins to compound more and more. And then we wonder, well, who is taking care of the children when the parents are at work? So, you begin to see this cycle. So, it's not just about one issue. It's connected to many different issues when we start speaking to this notion of quality of life. So, it's important that we send a strong message that a strong community means well-paid workers. It means people being able to tend to their children. It means being able to afford means of transportation. And that's all we're asking for. So, I also speak to support this effort, and I'm hoping that the city can understand the significance of these issues when it comes to quality of life for a good number of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Ludlow to close?
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you for the comments. And I just wanted to ask, I don't think people here understand how challenging and intimidating it can be to stand up on TV knowing that people are watching. They've worked a long, long day. They've stayed here all night to have an opportunity to testify. And so, I wanted to ask each one of you to just stand and enjoy a round of applause as we salute you. And thank you for all the work that you do to make Los Angeles work.
Thank you very much. And if there's nothing further on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
Gruel, Han, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Reyes, Smith, Villarrealgoza, Weiss, Zain, Padilla.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much. Before proceeding to the next item, Ms. Parks has requested to take item 28 out of order for a technical amendment only.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I just asked the clerk to add on 28A on the last paragraph, the phrase that includes the injuries to Henry, Martil, and Leroy Johnson. Would then correct the original motion.
Okay. With that amendment accepted without objection, there's no further discussion on this item. Let's open the roll. Item 28 as amended.
Gruel, Han, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Reyes, Smith, Villarrealgoza, Weiss, Zain, Padilla.
11 ayes.
Thank you very much. And I understand 31 should be rather quick, too, with a technical amendment. Mr. Reyes?
Yes. It's a substitute motion to accept a grant coming in from the federal government. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge Congressmember Berset for his hard work and bringing these funds together for Cypress Park and being able to establish a resource for our young people who need intervention, who want to get out of the cycle of gang life. And this program is designed to address that. So, we just want to get the green light from the city to accept those funds from the federal government.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And again, if there's not anything further, let's open the roll. Item 31 as amended.
Gruel, Han, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Reyes, Smith, Villarrealgoza, Weiss, Zain, Padilla.
10 ayes.
That is approved. And that does bring us back to item 14, called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Colleagues, tonight we have a presentation. I know it's been a long night, but this is an important presentation regarding West Nile virus by Department of Recreation and Parks and the Greater LA Vector Control District. Mr. Labonge and I had introduced a motion to have this presentation. There's been a lot of good information and also some misinformation about the West Nile virus. And I know, I think you, Ms. Han, had some of the particular sightings in your area. I have three people who are here, well, four actually, Jane Coeb and Jim Coombs from Recreation and Park, and Jack Hazelrigg from Vector Control Staff. And I'd also asked Bill Robertson from the Bureau of Street Services to be here because we get a lot of questions about standing water and the impact and West Nile virus. And I'd just like us to go on the record tonight in educating the public about its impacts. And so, I know that our Vector Control, if we could maybe ask Jack to go first, he has a quick presentation and some slides that will be able to give us some of that accurate information. And Jack, thank you for staying all these hours. He said he was experienced in going to council meetings, so he had no problem waiting till 9:30.
Thank you, members of the council. You expect this to be quick? Okay, I'll try to make it quick. Before I begin, though, I would like to acknowledge a council member on the dais, Councilwoman Janice Han. Janice has been very instrumental in working with our agency and trying to control a very difficult problem, mosquito problem, at Machado Lake. And I want to thank her for her efforts. Thank you very much. Tom Labonge, who was up here before he became councilman, helped us in creating a special zone to control black lives along the Los Angeles River Corridor. I wish he were here to acknowledge him, too, but... I'm going to give you a brief presentation on some facts about West Nile virus and our district's activities in preventing this disease in the various communities that we serve. And the 14th Councilmanic District is one of those communities. Can I have the next slide, please? It's not working. It's frozen.
Jack, maybe if you go ahead and make the presentation.
Sure, I can go through this. Well, the first question that's always asked is, what is West Nile virus? West Nile is an arbovirus, and that stands for arthropod borne. And it's specifically carried by mosquitoes. Should all know that birds are the main hosts for the virus. Mosquitoes bite birds, get the virus, and then pass it on to people or other susceptible animals through their bites. Should emphasize that this disease is not transmissible human to human. In other words, it's not a contagious disease, nor is it transmissible from animal to animal. You have to be bitten by an infected mosquito to acquire this disease. There is evidence, however, that some people have acquired this through blood donations that have been contaminated with the virus. I don't have this slide to show you, but this does show the transmission cycle of this disease. The birds are the host. Mosquitoes bite the birds. There are two very susceptible animals to this virus. One is horses, and one is man. These are dead-in hosts. I don't mean by dead-in that they die. They can. Horses are very susceptible and usually do. It's that once they get the virus, if they're bitten by an infected mosquito, that mosquito cannot pick up, or if they're bitten by a non-infected mosquito, that mosquito cannot pick up the virus and then transmit it to another person. So, there's not enough virus in a horse or a person, once they acquire the disease, to be able to have a mosquito pick it up and then transmit it, transmit it. Is West Nile virus infection serious? Most people that are bitten by infected mosquitoes do not get sick. About 20% of the people infected develop a moderate fever, might get a headache, body aches, joint aches, rash, swollen lymph nodes. In other words, you get flu-like symptoms, and that may be equivalent to West Nile fever. Less than 1%, that's about 1 in 150 people, become severely ill, developing neurological problems, that is, an infection of the brain or the meninges. And that can lead possibly to death. Persons over 50 are at greatest risk. There is generally a 3% to 15% mortality in these individuals. There is no human vaccine, only intensive supportive therapy in severe cases. There is, however, a vaccine available for horses, and people who own horses are encouraged to have their animals vaccinated. I'm not going to go into this next one. It would be visible as a slide for you to see. And unfortunately, you cannot see the occurrence in the United States. These slides are not available either. But let me summarize some of the data for you. This disease started in 1999 on the Atlantic coast in the state of New York. At that time, there were 62 cases. Seven people died. In the year 2000, there were 21 cases. Two people died. Disease spread very slowly through the North Atlantic states of the nation. In 2001, 66 people acquired the disease. Nine died. If you look at a map, it shows the disease spreading fairly slowly. If you look at a map for the year 2003, I'm sorry, 2002, there were 4,156 people infected with this disease throughout the United States, and 284 of them died. Last year, there were 9,862 people infected with this disease. 264 of them died. This year, this year, and we're early in the season for mosquitoes in the nation, there have been 182 people infected with this disease, and four have died so far. Two deaths in Arizona, one in Iowa, and I believe one in -- it's one of the Midwestern states, but I can't remember which one exactly. So, a total so far, over the last five years, over 14,000 people have been infected by this disease, and nearly 600 have died from it. This graph right here shows the positives. You can't see it. A West Nile virus in the nation compares statistics from the nation, California, Los Angeles County, Los Angeles City, which we're very interested in, of course, tonight, and in our district in general. To date, again, about 182 cases, four deaths. 32 of these 182 cases have occurred in California, eight within Los Angeles County, none in the city of Los Angeles so far, and only one within our district boundaries. Of horses, 42 in the nation. 26 have acquired the disease in California. 11 have died. None in Los Angeles County, none in Los Angeles City, and none in our district. I can go through these statistics, but I think that pretty well exemplifies the fact that, at least in Los Angeles County, we haven't had any human cases or any transmission of this virus to any animals that would suffer from this disease. On the other hand, since birds are the host, there have been a lot of birds reported with this disease, or at least have had evidence of the disease. And a number of the birds that have been reported are dead birds. And there are some birds that die from acquiring West Nile virus, particularly birds that are in the corvid family, crows, jays, and magpies. So far, in the city of Los Angeles, there have been reported 70 dead birds with West Nile virus in them. In our district alone, there have been 247 birds. In California alone, so far, in California, there have been 875 birds reported with West Nile virus, and all of them have been within the Southern California area. I have a map here that shows the city of Los Angeles and where we have established some of our sentinel chicken flocks, where we have detected West Nile virus in birds, and also where we have found them in mosquitoes as well. Fortunately, you can't see that. Well, the big question is, what is the district doing about West Nile virus? Essentially, the program involves, our program involves three programs, subprograms. We have disease surveillance. That's for us to be able to detect the presence of virus, occurrence, and transmission in the district. Disease prevention, that involves mosquito management or control, obviously, and then community outreach. And then the third segment is collaboration. That's collaboration or communication with other public agencies. What is West Nile surveillance? Well, as I said before, there are some birds that are very susceptible to this disease. And so, we ask the public to report dead or traumatized birds. These generally tend to be crows. We take blood samples from feral birds or wild birds throughout the district. We have special cages set up throughout the district, and we bleed these birds on a frequent basis. And we also take blood samples from sentinel chickens. Again, these are the hosts for the virus, and so, we're able to detect in their blood antibodies if they've been infected by the virus. And we also make mosquito collections. The mosquito collections are sampled for virus content. That's very important in our surveillance program. Well, as I said before, the crows and the jays are very susceptible to the disease. And we collect as many of these birds that are reported to us as we possibly can. And there is a hotline number for all of you who are interested in reporting dead birds. And I urge you to report any dead bird that you come across. That number is 1-877, the initials W-N-V, and then bird, B-I-R-D. If you can remember that number, that's very important. So, if you see a dead bird, please call that number. That goes to the state, and is referred back to the various districts. Dead birds, as I said before, are sent to the state for virus determination. That gives us a clue as to where the transmission is occurring in the district. We also take, as I said before, blood samples from wild birds. And these are captured and bled at about eight sites in the district. The blood specimens are sent to UC Davis at their Center for Vector Disease, and they actually do the analysis. The presence of the virus antibodies indicates a recent infection and a non-focal transmission of West Nile virus. Birds can fly all over the place, so there's really no way of knowing exactly if that bird got the infection locally or focally. It just gives us an idea there's transmission occurring. We also have chickens that are placed throughout the district.
Hey, Jack, can I just ask you a question about that hotline, the dead bird hotline?
Yeah.
Is that open, is that a 24-hour day, seven-day week?
That's 24/7.
24/7?
24/7.
And does the bird have to be tested in a manor town, like the first 24 hours?
Yes. It's important that the first 24 hours is important.
But that number is open 24/7?
That number is open 24. As far as I know, now, maybe late in the evening at 2:00 in the morning, they wouldn't expect a dead bird report. But as far as I know, it's available during daytime hours for call. And they do have a recorded, I think there's a way of recording a message, too.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So, we have seven sentinel flocks, seven sentinel chicken flocks in the district, and three of these are located in the city of Los Angeles. One down at Kim Malloy Harbor Regional Park, one at Griffith Park, and one in the Sepulveda Basin in the Encino area. And again, blood is drawn from these chickens on a bi-weekly basis, and samples are sent up to Berkeley to see if they have West Nile virus antibodies in them. So far, we haven't had any chickens convert in the district. So, a little puzzling, since we've had a lot of dead birds fall out of the sky with West Nile virus. Not quite sure what's happening there.
Jack?
Sure.
Just a question, because I know that interest by the people who are listening in the public here today is, what should they do? I mean, you've obviously described for us kind of the situation that we have. And if you're a citizen in Los Angeles, obviously if you found a dead bird, but what other kinds of, I guess, things that they can do, whether it is if you're outside wearing some kind of, you know, long-sleeved shirt, whatever, kind of those kinds of recommendations?
Okay.
And I apologize to kind of cut you off.
Sure, I understand. Sure. That's a good question. Again, let me emphasize that West Nile virus is a preventable disease. If individuals take precautions, they can prevent acquiring this disease. I just kind of use a mnemonic device, and that's apply the four Ds for personal protection. Two of these Ds is if you're, you know, if you need to be outside, try to avoid being outside in mosquito-infested areas between dusk and dawn, or during dusk and dawn, the nighttime hours. That's when mosquitoes tend to bite here in the basin, is during the evening hours. If you go outside in a highly mosquito-infested area, apply an insect repellent. Anything with about 30% D in it is recommended and sufficient. And the last D in the four Ds is defend your home against the invasion of mosquitoes. Make sure your screens fit tight, aren't torn, ripped. Repair them if they are. Make sure your screen doors fit tight as well. That's the best way to personally protect. That's the best way to personally protect yourself.
Great. And before, Jack, you conclude, is there any other advice and recommendations you would give to the public before we hear from Wreckin Parks?
Yes, one last advice. The district is able to access standing water where mosquitoes develop and breed. That's not a problem for us. We can treat those situations quite effectively, and eliminate the mosquitoes that are in them. What we can't get to, and what we urge the public to be aware of, is standing water on their properties, particularly in their backyard. That's non-accessible water to us. Any kind of standing water that stands for any length of time will eventually breed mosquitoes. So please, eliminate any standing water in or around your property. And you have to look in very, very inconspicuous places, because mosquitoes can actually breed in a thimble full of water.
Great. Jack, I want to say thank you very much for being here. Sorry for the technical difficulties.
Not a problem.
But you did a great job without the slides, and let's give a great round of applause for Jack from Vector Control. Thank you. Jim, would you like to make a brief presentation and cover anything maybe that Jack did not cover in his presentation relative to Wreckin Parks?
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here this evening. What Jack didn't tell you is about eighty percent of the mosquitoes come from your backyards. So it's estimated that the majority of the mosquito population is coming from your personal residence, and not from lakes and streams and public bodies of water, which I found very interesting. We knew as a department about two years ago that we were facing this problem, and we started looking at ways to address this. As a department, working with several of the council members, we've been very aggressive about treating our large bodies of water, in particular Harbor Regional and the Sepulveda Basin, and trying to reduce areas that would breed mosquitoes. And we've been pretty successful at that. We've been limited by resources, but we've actually shifted resources within the department to put more effort into that, and we've been fairly successful. Right now, what we're doing, so we're getting on board with the county health, and we're trying to educate our employees and educate the public about this problem. Yesterday, the county came out, working with us, and trained four hundred of our employees in two sessions yesterday. That'll not only benefit them, but it will benefit them in their interactions with the public, so they can speak intelligently and inform our citizens of what this problem is all about. And secondly, there's a great pamphlet that's out, that's produced by county health. We're putting these out through all of our centers and all of our facilities within recreation and parks. They're in seven different languages. We're putting those out in locations that require us to put those out in different languages in that language. And right now, most of our efforts are going into educating the public. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jim. I know you made a presentation as well to the Arts Health, Arts Parks Center.
Arts and Parks yesterday.
Arts and Parks Committee, and Health and Aging. Thank you very much. And just lastly, we have Bill Robertson here, from Street Services. And Bill, again, probably all of my colleagues have gotten calls from their constituents which say, you know, at the corner here, there's water, and standing water, and what's the city going to do to be able to correct that it's a breeding ground for mosquitoes and West Nile virus? Could you just share with us how your department is responding?
I'd be glad to, and good evening, council members. Bill Robertson, Bureau of Street Services. We have actually seen our requests for standing water triple, just in the last six months alone. We've known for, as Jack mentioned, we've watched the disease move across the United States. As a horse owner, and Jack mentioned, there is a vaccine for horses. My horses were vaccinated almost eighteen months ago. And as a bureau, we realized that this problem was starting to come across the states, and we needed to address it. And despite the fact that we are not funded directly to address West Nile disease and standing water locations, we have allocated resources to mitigate as many of the worst locations as possible. Working with Commissioner Ruiz, with the Board of Public Works, we have actually now doubled those resources that are available to address the standing water issues in the city. We can't promise we're going to fix everyone, but we will promise that we will mitigate to the best of our ability the worst of those standing water issues. And we urge everybody to use the resources, both from LA County, Recreation and Parks, Bureau Sanitations. There's a great deal of information out there that can help them mitigate their exposure to this disease and the standing water issue.
Great, and thank you, colleagues. Again, I know it's late, and I appreciate the brevity of our departments and their presentation, and there may be some questions from my colleagues.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. I just wanted to say to Jack from Vector Control, and to Bill, and to Jim from Recreation Parks, I just want to say, this was my first experience as a council member dealing with this issue, but what I do want to praise all of you for is that, and I want the residents of Los Angeles to know, that we really have been aggressively working to prevent and prepare for the day that we had our first sightings of West Nile virus in a bird or mosquito. We have been aggressively working at our parks, dredging at Harbor Regional, we've been cutting back the thule, the overgrown weeds, because we knew it was a breeding ground. We've been making sure that our mosquito-eating fish were able to swim and get to the mosquito larvae. We've really been working on this. I want everyone to know that we're not just reacting. The city of Los Angeles is not just reacting now that we've seen the cases hit Los Angeles County. We sort of knew it was marching across the country. We were trying to prevent it, but deep in our hearts, I think everybody pretty much realized that in fact it would come here. So I just want to thank all of you, and the city should know that this council just recently appropriated money towards this effort with Vector Control and with Recreation and Parks. So we really have aggressively been attacking this problem. In terms of this brochure, when we realized that it had hit Harbor Regional Park, I had a press conference out there, wanted to make sure we alerted. We're concerned about our senior citizens, of course, because it seems like our seniors and our children, no matter what the issue is, seem to be the most vulnerable in terms of this disease. Are we getting these brochures to the senior centers within the city of Los Angeles?
Yes, we're getting them to all of our park facilities, our childcare centers, our equine centers, our senior centers, rec centers.
Thank you, because I think the message here tonight is, the chances are, there will be birds, there will be horses, there will be mosquitoes that have this West Nile virus. So the best thing we can do now is aggressively, in our own homes, in our own areas, make sure we get rid of standing water when we go out, to make sure we have some sort of mosquito repellent that contains DEET. So we do have remedies for this. I would also urge, and I guess, Bill, you can answer this, can people call 311 to report standing water anywhere they see in the city of Los Angeles?
Yes, absolutely. Call 311. All they have to do is mention standing water, and the operators know that it'll directly, the request will directly come to the Bureau of Street Services.
Great. So everybody needs to remember 311, one call to City Hall does it all for a number of issues, but this is a particular one. And while I have you, there is standing water constantly on North Gaffey, right by the Home Depot, and the GS Brothers landscaping facility. That water is standing all the time. So if you guys could get out there and check it, I think there's a structural problem there in our street.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
And just again, thank you. We introduced this message, Janice, exactly for that reason, to share with the public that we actually were on top of this, that we were being proactive and not reactive. And so I again, want to thank the three of you for being here tonight and staying late to be able to educate the public. But we encourage you all to find out any additional information and call 311. Thank you, Ms. President.
Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Councilmember Gruel, for bringing this up tonight. We appreciate it. Just a couple of questions for the individuals, can't get away yet, Jack. On your statistics, on the cases and death rates, one of the things that I noticed in the numbers that you presented, is that for this year, if you just looked at it year to date, this looks like an outrageous drop. Is that because June, July, and August, we haven't hit the crux of the season, or the cases have, I mean, because at a hundred and eighty-two cases right now, ninety-eight-hundred in the last year, we're already eight months into the seventh, almost to the eighth month of the year already?
Yeah, that's true. Peak mosquito activity is generally in August and September. And one of the things that's happening, we assume anyway, is that a lot of people from the previous years throughout the nation have become immune to the disease, because most people that become bitten by an infected mosquito won't even get the disease, but they'll develop an immunity. So next time they're bitten by an infected mosquito, they won't get sick. So there's probably what we call herd immunity that's occurred throughout the nation. That's why you see a lot of reduction in the number. But California has yet to go through that phenomenon. But with good mosquito control and an aware public, we hope to keep that number down.
And then, all of the great information that came out, and I appreciate each one of you being here, when, I didn't hear, and maybe it was, it tuned out or something for a minute, but I was trying to pay attention, when bitten by a mosquito, you should do what?
Well, if you're bitten by a mosquito, chances are, you're just going to be bitten by a mosquito. It's probably not even going to be infected. But if you begin to develop a headache, rash, swollen lymph nodes, you get muscle aches, you get joint aches, about three to ten days following a mosquito bite, and you're aware of a mosquito bite, I would say go to your doctor and have your doctor try to do a diagnosis as quickly as possible.
Great. And then last, just, you mentioned the amazing statistic on, I think it was our great Street Services reporter, no, it was Wreckin Parks, on the cases that come from, or the number of mosquitoes that are generating from backyards. Are you all putting out any information about what people can do to help make their yard a little bit more, less susceptible? Is there anything that you're encouraging, or you're not encouraging anything to be done?
I know the district has launched over a hundred thousand dollar ad campaign, so we're doing PSAs, we've got flyers in various areas that are being handed out, so we're trying to get the message out to the public as much as possible.
Great, thank you. And last but not least, this is completely off the subject, Councilmember Viragosa, if people are watching TV, they've noticed in front of Cindy Misakowski and myself, is now one of these great table, what do you call these, centerpieces? Who did these phenomenal centerpieces? These are absolutely gorgeous.
Glad you asked. I'm going to share that with you in just a moment. A young man, Arturo Chavez, a constituent in the Fourteenth Councilmanic District, did all the centerpieces, they're obviously very beautiful. He's not with us. He donated to the city of Los Angeles his wonderful centerpieces. Want to thank Arturo Chavez. I also want to thank, on that cue, Mr. Ludlow.
I'll take him, Mr. Viragosa, that there are no other questions or comments on this particular item. Thank you, gentlemen, for the report. Let's let him file that.
And there is a motion before the council. Do you wish to take a vote on that?
Let's open the roll.
Gruel, Hahn, Ludlow, Misakowski, Perry, Smith, Viragosa, Weiss, Sainpa dia.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Did you have public comment remaining, but before we get to general public comment for today's meeting, Mr. Viragosa?
Yes, I want to thank the following people for the food and beverages. As I said, about seven hundred and eighty-three people signed in, seven hundred and eighty-four with Tom Labonge. There were a number of people who didn't get to sign in, but they all ate, or most of them did anyways. And the food and beverages for our reception were provided by Siete Madre Seafood Wholesale, Sergio Diaz, Teresita's Restaurant, Antonio Hernandez, Sun's Restaurant by Philip Sun, Coffee Table by Mike Samaripa, Guerrero's Market, La Noche Buena by Guillermo Cano Garcia, Los Dos Compadres, McDonald's El Sereno, Evelardo Jimenez, El Vaquero, Malakias Vasquez, Cafetico, Martin Camacho, Tamale Man, Carlos Melgosa, Charlie's Trio, Cha Cha Cha, Georgia Naya, Hillside Village Property Owners Association for sponsoring the beverages, ALA 932 for sponsoring desserts from the ALA Baking Company. Want to thank the Department of Water for the water, and all of the city department and community-based organizations which participated in today's fair, including Wilson High School, JROTC, Adriana Apodaca, who sang the National Anthem, Mariachi Monumental de América, by Rose Cano, and Plaza La Raza, from the First Councilmanic District, Astix Junior and Astix Fire Fuels Crew, Cleaning Green, Art in the Park, ALA 932 Neighborhood Council Ad-Hoc Committee, including Linda McGuire, Cynthia Ruiz, Irene Ponce, and President Richard Acosta, Felipe Gonzalez and El Sereno Rose Hill Soccer Club, Tammy Membrano and Body Action, the Cathedral High School Football Team, our ushers tonight, Jim Piñón and the Hillside Village Property Owners Association, Eva Flores and the Mexican-American Opportunity Foundation, Arturo David Chavez for donating all the flower arrangements, which we talked about, all of our volunteers, the City Clerk's Office, especially Brian Walters, the General Services Department, and Eric Robles, Channel Thirty-five, and James McBride, ITA and Council Audio Services, Russ, Ken, and Steve, the CLA's office, the City Attorney's Office, MTA and Roger Snoble, the ALA Police Department, Hollenbeck Vice Officers, the Department of Recreation and Parks, and finally, I want to thank the staff of the Fourteenth Council District. Give them a big hand. Our event organizers, Jenny Caddion, one of my stars here in El Sereno, Jenny's too shy to raise her hand, but that's okay, Dora Garcia, Carmen Duran, and Angela Ovaya. And I'll just give first names, Gabriela, Anna, Sarahe, Lisa, Monica, Yuli, Irene, Michael Bronley, Cecilia, Gladys, Adriana, Paul, Abigail, Liz, Samantha, Krista, Joe, Jim, Miguel, Celine, and even Mr. Blackman, who may or may not be here, we call him part-time for short. He's here! Oh my goodness, Jim Bickard as well, thank you. Just kidding, Mr. Blackman. My chief of staff, everybody, Mr. Blackman, the man who makes everything possible. And now, I'd like to, we begin public comment.
Who did you say sponsored the coffee?
The coffee?
Yeah.
The coffee was sponsored...
They have anybody else? They have anymore?
By Cafetico, and also by a wonderful new coffee shop that you've been to, as a matter of fact, The Coffee Table, Mike Samaripa. Yes. You've been to that new coffee shop, my friend. In fact, you know the Council District Fourteen as well as anybody in this room. Public comment. I understand that we're going to call up, who've been waiting very, very patiently tonight, the South Central Farmers here. Let's give them a big hand, everybody. Now, I understand that we, there's about fifty or sixty cards here, and I understand that if you went first, there would be about three or four people speaking on your behalf. Okay, you can identify those people for the record, beginning with yourself.
My name is Tessa Somok. I'm one of the organizers of the South Central Farmers. It's a good thing that we're having the meeting here in a Christian church, because otherwise I would have thought this was a Laplasian demon. I'd like to first begin by saying that we continue to campaign on behalf of open green space for all of the community in LA. We're here to have people who don't have access to growing food, we provide that. And I want to basically thank two people today, Antonio Viragosa and Ed Reyes, for not rubber-stamping Elephant Hill. I want to introduce one of our young ladies, one of the people that we're making an investment on our youth at South Central Farmers, Elizabeth Rodriguez.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Garcia.
Ms. Rodriguez, can you speak a little louder and into the microphone, please?
Okay.
So we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Garcia, and this is really important for me and other families, for us to save this garden, because if we're not in, if we're not...
It's okay.
This is really important for us to save this garden, because, because we know... Sabemos más así de la cultura de nuestros padres. Sabemos más así de la cultura de nuestros padres, de nuestras familias, y también...
This is very important for us, because it allows us to know the culture of our parents and allows them to teach it to us?
Porque para tenerles, para que los ocho conozcamos más, y más, para que cuando así vayamos una parte, no dajemos la naturaleza.
This is very important for us, for us to learn the ways of our parents, so that when we come into different situations, we take good care of the environment.
Y también porque así nos estamos lejos de nuestras familias, estamos en pandillas o drogas o en otras cosas malas, estamos ayudando a otras personas.
In this way, we are close to our parents, we're close to our friends, we're not involved in drugs or any other activities.
Y también es importante porque así, donde yo vivo, yo vivo en un apartamento y no hay un lugar donde yo tenga el espacio que necesito para respirar aire limpio, y allí puedo conocer más personas, hacer más amigos de los que ya tengo.
This is, this place is important, because I live in an apartment, and I don't have a place to breathe, to breathe fresh air. It's also a place for me, where I, for me, so where I can go meet other friends, where I can hang out with.
And I just want to say that it's really very important for us to save the garden.
Thank you very much, Ms.
Claire Markgraf. Hello, my name is Claire Markgraf, and I'm here as a representative of the Urban Environmental Policy Institute at Occidental College, where I've been working with a team of researchers to investigate the environmental values and attitudes related to the immigrant experience. As part of this research, I've done some work with Rafinha Juarez and the 41st Street Garden, and I'm here as an advocate of the garden. The 41st Street Garden is a shining example of community togetherness, and it is found in an area with one of the lowest median incomes in Los Angeles County, mainly populated, excuse me, mainly populated by first-generation and second-generation Latino immigrants. The gardeners of the 41st Street Garden are a reflection of the population in that area of South LA. Many of them are hard-working people trying to raise families where they can afford to do it. And working in and with the garden, they have become participants in an informal urban renewal project, whose impacts stretch throughout the areas of life in the community. Police records show that the garden has nearly no drug or gang activity, and is essentially graffiti-free. Implicit in these facts is the idea that those around here are not interested in that type of activity, and collectively, they are making a conscious effort to reject those things. This could happen for several reasons, not the least of which is the idea that proper nutrition is essential to good decision-making in both adults and youth. Let me share with you some of the statements that immigrant gardeners and farmers have shared with me while doing the research. Quote one, "I work in the earth to show my children respect." Quote two, "I garden because the foods I grow are healthier than the others that I'll find in the area I live in." Quote three, "I grow vegetables to supplement my income." These statements corroborate the ideas that gardens serve both the community as well as the individuals. Leaving this garden be is a long-term investment in the health and livability and viability of this community, and in turn, it will serve as an example for communities around the country. The garden is an oasis of food, shade, and recreation in the middle of an unequivocally bleak and gray area of South Los Angeles. Many of the members of the city council should be fighting to save this invaluable resource, and send a message to Los Angeles that we recognize and value the need for permanent gardens, rather than making its gardeners, who are building this block, building blocks of solid communities, temporary occupants of the land, which is simply not being used for any other purpose at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want, I want, a lot of the people that are here tonight have taken their time off to be here. Some of them work at night, and they have to run from here to their jobs, like you guys were saying about working in hotels. They got to go work in menial jobs, too. So I want to thank our elders here, which are the ones who are going to lose out when this garden disappears. Thank you. And I'm going to have Don Eddie talk for them.
Muy buenas tardes, Presidente Municipal, y los concejales. Como campesinos que somos, venimos de día, rogales, que les dejen en su lugar, para cultivar esas tierras. Se cultivan, porque mi padre me dejaron una herencia millonaria, que son trabajar las tierras. Ahora...
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Don Eddie, and we're here to ask you to please, we're begging you to please allow us to keep the land, so we can continue farming the land, because our parents, our ancestors, gave us a great heritage.
Por eso, señor gobernantes, usted, Presidente Municipal, tiene las riendas en la mano, para que los ayuden y los apoyen a los campesinos y campesinas. Éste de este grupo que está detrás de mí, son puros campesinos y campesinas. Por eso...
That's why elected officials and Mayor, we ask you to please support us and join us in saving this farm for the female farmers and the male farmers that are here. They're all here, working to farm. Support us. They're male and female farmers.
Por eso, les vuelvo a repetir la misma palabra, que los dejen en sus lugares, para sembrar, cultivar alimentaciones, para ayudar a la gente, que sean más humildes, que sean pobres, para que más entiendan. Ahora...
That's why I ask you to please help us maintain that place, so we can continue farming there, farming our food. And this is the type of people that are the most poor, and they're the most humble.
Lo que cultivamos allí, señor presidente y concejales, estamos ayudando a esa gente bajo de recursos, porque el sueldo que tienen no les alcanza para darle de comer a sus hijos.
Council, council members, and also Mayor, what we're asking is to help us. These are the people that are the lowest-income people, and the money that they earn is not enough to be able to support their families.
Por eso, no les pito mucho el tiempo. Les vuelvo a repetir, no los olviden. Apóyenlo como autoridades que son, y tenemos la fe en ustedes. Gracias.
That's why I want to repeat once again, don't forget about us. Support us. We have faith in you. Help us.
Thank you.
Buenas noches, Presidente Padilla, el Consilio...
Excuse me, Mr. Somok, was this the last speaker? Okay, yes. And can you state your name, please?
Ricardo Mireles, and I live at 5936 Hayes Avenue in Highland Park. And just to repeat, I want to thank the council, yourself, for bringing this here closer to the people. And I'm here representing the Latino Urban Forum. The Latino Urban Forum fought very hard and was victorious with your help at the cornfields. And we're fighting now with Elephant, the Elephant Hill Project, and we're fighting for the South Central Farmers. The South Central Farmers represent a project that has, you know, it's not just a piece of land, it's people connected to that land, it's a community connected to that land. Now, I want to speak a little bit here to the President. President Padilla's family is a couple towns over from my family in Chihuahua. And so, and I know about what it means to, the value of land to a community, to a history, and in particular, to making that land productive. This isn't just a fight about land. This is a fight about land that they're making productive. And they're doing this across generations. That's why we have these, what these kids are learning about what they're doing, and about what is a connection to what their grandfathers did. So I just want to emphasize that point, that this is really a fight across a long period of time, with people who vote now and are going to vote over those generations. I want to thank you for your time, and please consider their cause.
Thank you all very much.
One more thing, just for the record. Aquí estamos y no nos vamos. Tierra libertad.
To translate, here we are, and we're not going anywhere, and land, and liberty. Thank you. And let me just say to the farmers, thank you for waiting so patiently today. I realize that it's no consolation to you, but we are actually, as a result of hearing about your situation, going to be opening up and working on community gardens here in El Sereno. We're also looking for some sites in Boyle Heights, and possibly Eagle Rock as well. You know, oftentimes, while it may feel like nobody's listening, I can tell you that people understand that this, and especially those of us who have visited the garden, understand what a jewel it is, not just for South Central, but for Los Angeles. And thank you very much for being here today. Muchas gracias a todos por estar aquí. Es un honor, y estamos abriendo un jardín comunitario aquí en El Sereno, y buscando lugares en Boyle Heights, y hasta en Eagle Rock, y sabemos que esto es algo muy importante. Ustedes tienen un jardín que es una joya, no nomás para el sur central, sino para los ángeles. Thank you very much. And for the record, all of your names will be submitted, for the record, with the clerk. Our next, thank you very much. Muchas gracias. Thank you. Our next speaker is Alana Yanez.
First, I'd like to thank all the farm workers here, all the farmers and the gardeners for coming out. We've stayed really late, and Save Elephant Hill very much supports their cause, as they do ours. Honorable Council President and Council Members, my name is Alana Yanez, and I live at 4627 Harriman Avenue, next to Elephant Hill here in El Sereno. I am here representing hundreds of residents and numerous community organizations that have gone on record to oppose TrackMap 35022. I have two very different messages to convey to you tonight. First, I would like to express my deep, deep disappointment in yesterday's 9 to 2 council vote to approve final recordation of this TrackMap. The city rushed an incomplete clearance of the map's conditions of approval, the deletion of two important conditions, and the final recordation demonstrate that meritless legal threats and intimidation by a notorious developer have more influence than due diligence, codified planning procedures, and the needs of a community that has suffered from neglect for most of its history. Secondly, I would like to acknowledge the three council members who spoke yesterday in opposition to this development. Council members Antonio Viragosa, Ed Reyes, and Eric Garcetti. We congratulate you. Thank you very much. We want to express our thanks to council members Viragosa and Reyes for their votes yesterday to deny final recordation of TrackMap 35022. Please accept these flowers in recognition of your stand with the Northeast community and for environmental and economic justice. Thank you.
My name is Michael Carrion. I live at 4161 North Portola. And I also was embarrassed to be an Angelino while this vote took place. This vote showed me that this council here did not even respect the people's opinion. Mr. Zine, you made a statement today that your constituents want to be heard on what's going on in your community. All we asked for was to be heard and to be recognized for Elephant Hill, and we weren't. And you also voted against it. Mr. Reyes voted with us, but Mr. Reyes, they just had something that came up today about the West Nile virus. I've been working with your office to get Belmont to clean their own high school up, the Belmont High School Project, the outside. They blocked up some of the gutters, the water's sitting there, and it wasn't fair to them. People are working real good with me to clean that area up, to get it cleaned up. These people that are standing behind us are standing here for a reason. They believe in what they, what they're standing here for. This council is discussing $1 billion for Grand Avenue, for upper-end people that nobody here is going to see, after spending hundreds of thousands of dollars just to curve Grand Avenue from north to southeast, I don't know how it went, but to look at the Disney Theater, you spent hundreds of millions of dollars just to curve the street. Now you've got a project in front of you for over $1 billion in the Grand Avenue area, and all they're asking for is their little piece of land. I also stand here to make sure that we're understood on the MetroLink. This pamphlet that I received said, basically, the jobs are going only to the skilled professionals. There's a lot of people here in El Sereno, here in Boyle Heights, and a lot of the other areas, that are in need of these jobs that are not skilled professionals. They are our young, our teenagers. They are our future. And if something's not put in this pamphlet that's going to help us, everything you said was nice and sounds real well, but it's not going to help the kids who need the help. There are kids here in El Sereno that are dying, but we're in the corner, we're the Unforgotten Area. Boyle Heights is a lot bigger. They've gotten 23, $24 million. We haven't gotten a penny for intervention or prevention. We got to, we're looking at it. I ask you, as a council, to remember all the 700, some people that were here have kids. When you drive out of here, look at the kids that are walking in the streets, because they may be the next one to die tonight. It is your opportunity to do something for these kids. This is my community. I live here. I see these kids on an everyday basis, and I see them after they're dead, too. And I'm standing here to ask you guys to find some way to get some intervention into this community and some prevention, because this does not start, you should not intervene after it started. You can prevent it now.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Manuel Martinez. Manuel Martinez.
I first want to start off by thanking you, Mr. Viragosa, for speaking to us really quickly. I know we grabbed you. And also, council members, I can also tell you that my deep appreciation for the position you guys hold, I just finished taking a political science class, and honestly, I thought you guys just hobnobbed and went to really expensive banquets. Right now, it's 10 o'clock. I'm really tired. I want to go home, and I know you guys do, too, so I'll be quick and to the point. I'm a parent at Pacific Christian School, which is seated in the city of Herman, or the little, small community of Herman, which Mr. Viragosa is very familiar with. Over 100 years ago, the school was started by the Free Methodist Church as a way of getting the community to grow. Two weeks ago, we received some information that the school, after 100 years, was going to close. So what I'm here today is not exactly to ask for money, which would be great, if you guys do have some, we'd love to have it. I know there's a lot of other things that are needed, as these people have already made mention. But what I'd like to ask, and see if there's any ideas, anything you guys can help with, what's happened to the school is, after 100 years, the school's always tried to provide great education. We have a, 100% of the 12th graders are going into college. 90% of the student body is in the honor roll. My daughter came in as a C student. My daughter came in as a C student two semesters ago, she's a 7th grader, she was Student of the Month and also Student of the School, so I have a vested interest in that school. What's happened is that the school board has always had enough, enough students, enough money, enough of everything, so that the school would survive. Two weeks ago, we received an emergency letter saying that the school was not gonna have enough, and they need funding. We were brought in and asked to come up with any ideas this Saturday, we're having a Help Our School Festival, to try to do anything we can. And Mr. Viegosa was so kind to stop and direct us to some of the people, I would ask that if any of the council members know the school, it's situated on a very scenic spot in Mount Herman, and we were just asked that if anyone can attend, this Saturday we're having that picnic, we'd love to have you, and any help, any ideas?
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And let me just say, all our listeners on Channel 35, this is a great school in the 14th Councilman district in the Herman area, and tomorrow we're going to share with the city about what a success story this school is, and hopefully we're gonna be able to attract enough students in the next couple of days.
Just need 25.
We need 25 students. The tuition is about $6,000 for...
One year?
A year for elementary school, and how much for high school?
Well, it's a 7th through high school, $6,000 for 7th through 8th, and $7,000 for 9th through 12th.
$7,000, 9th through 12th. We thank you very much for your presentation and look forward to working with you to see what we could do to keep this school open, it's a great jewel, thank you.
We have brochures and we're passing those out.
Thank you. And folks, I've been reminded, and maybe because we're not in chamber, that there's a one-minute time on each presentation. I did let a number of people go longer than that, just because of their passion, and I love passion, but it's, I want to make sure that we get to hear everybody tonight, so thank you very much, Mr. Martinez. If I can call Martin Velarde, and then Mary Switzer, I will let them know when their one minute is up. Martin Velarde? Mary Switzer? Mary Switzer?
Hi.
Excuse me, are you Mary Switzer?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Good evening, or good night, I should say. Hi, my name is Mary Switzer, I am a student of the Alternative Education Program offered at Barrio Action and Family Center. I have offered, oh, sorry, I have lived in El Sereno all my life, and I still can't believe that this entire time I never knew how amazing Barrio Action is. I always believed all the bad things I heard everyone say about Barrio Action, well, I guess this is a perfect example of the saying, "Don't believe everything you heard." I don't think that people realize what a great program this is, and I truly believe that the progress that Barrio Action is trying really hard to make will soon be noticed by many people. There are so many different programs at Barrio Action that they can help you with any assistance you need. The staff at Barrio Action is amazing, their determination to make a difference in people's lives is astonishing. The fact that the building, so small, can contain so many different programs really shows they care. The many programs offered at Barrio Action are parenting, counseling, schooling, gang intervention, community service, and after-school programs for students attending El Sereno Middle School.
Your time is up, can you wrap up?
I would like to thank everyone here that helped fight and continue this wonderful program, especially Councilman Viegosa, and I just want to thank you for the building, for the center that will continue to affect, allowing the future to be a better place for ourselves, our children, and our families.
Oh, thank you so much. And folks, if you don't know, because I know Mr. Carrion is very concerned about at-risk youth and the need to have prevention and intervention, Barrio Action is one of those organizations, and this year, we're gonna begin construction on an incredible facility, youth center, constituent center, it's gonna be a real jewel here in El Sereno, we're real happy and excited about it. Melanie Davis.
Hi, my name is Melanie, and I'm a student at Barrio Action. I enjoy coming to Barrio Action because the students and staff are so wonderful, they are all polite and caring. Barrio Action gives me an opportunity to continue my education and further my studies towards college. I think having a new center would really help the students that attend Barrio Action because it would keep them interested and keep them motivated. With this new center, the students can learn and have fun at the same time. It will keep us occupied and give us new activities to do. The new center has a dance studio, and I love to dance because it takes my mind off of things. For the guys, there's basketball in a weight room, there's also a lot of other extracurricular activities for everyone to enjoy. This new center will mean a lot to me and others who attend Barrio Action, because right now we don't have any place to go for recreational activities. Barrio Action is already full of great smiles and wonderful people. I think this new center would increase our education, our learning skills, and the happiness in our community. Thank you, Councilman V.A. Riegosa, for your support.
You're welcome, thank you, Melanie. Rosa Waddis, Rosie Waddis. Johnny Godinez.
Good evening, council members. Happy to be here in person, finally, to get to talk to all of yous. I'm a certified gang intervention specialist for the Boyle Heights area, and I'm just here to, you know, to talk about our violence that's been going on. You know, we need to help get together with all of the city council, and I'm asking all of yous, we're having a Peace Gang Summit coming on August 21st. We need more help out there, you know, there's a lot of our youth, you know, we worked with Antonio Viegosa, helps with Ed Reyes, and the other council members, I'm sure, all over the city. We need to get, you know, like you have PhDs, right? We're PhDs in the streets, and there's a lot of things that are going on out there, our youth are losing a lot of their lives, and they need to be steered the right way, and we're asking for more help from the city council to really take this serious, because our youngsters are getting into the gangs, they're becoming just little groupies, and then tigers, and then gang members, but they don't have nowhere to go. They're being kicked out of the parks, they're being kicked out of the street, they can't even walk up and down to go to the store anywhere. But we want to have a meeting with you, with the Association of Intervention Workers, and we're asking that, would you please give that some thought? We have solutions, and all the way from Blinky Rodriguez, San Fernando Valles, San Fernando Valley, to East LA Boyle Heights, all the way to South Central, all over. Right now, we're working with the brown and black situation also that's arising. We have a lot of issues, but we need to really sit down, we're bringing programs, that they're all good, these programs, but if we're not out there in the street, working with our young youth, and addressing these serious issues that are going on out there, we're gonna lose them. So I'm asking for all of your help, and we really would appreciate it. If any of you council members, you're all invited to our summit, and you could talk to Council Member Antonio Viegosa's aide, and they would give you the information, we'll give them on the day where it's gonna be and all that, but we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Godinez. Michael McGuire. As he's approaching, Michael McGuire is Linda McGuire's other half. How are you, Michael?
That's right, I'm the bad half. Thank you, thank you for your kind words to my wife tonight, Mr. Viegosa. President Padilla, Mr. Viegosa, and council members, thank you for allowing me to come here tonight and speak to you. I have something that I'm gonna speak to that's not narrow to the jurisdiction of the council or to the city at large, it's actually expands well beyond that. I don't know if that's an issue or not. Okay, very good. I'll take that as a yes. Monday past, July 19th, I was fortunate enough to be in Washington DC at the National Press Club, where I was enjoined by approximately 500 people from all over the country, virtually every state in the Union, along with the We the People Foundation for Constitutional Education, where we had a press release introducing a lawsuit, unfortunately, a class-action lawsuit against the federal government for a little-known clause at the end of the First Amendment, which is the right of petition of redress. And as you know, that the right of petition is more to protect the minority from the majority, which has their protections at the ballot box. In any case, over the last five years, we have made honest, forthright, professional appeals to the federal government to answer questions regarding the War Powers Act is We're not against war, we're not saying we're against war, but we are saying that the Congress had advocated their constitutional responsibilities to the executive, where that should have been debated in front of the House, the Senate, and House of Representatives, and in front of the American people, and they should have put their political necks out there and made a decision to go to war or not, and we shouldn't have had the executive vote for an Iraqi resolution. So they really have...
Thanks.
Okay, moving on, moving on, okay.
Only because you're well over me.
Understood, but I'm very passionate about this too, so, okay. The Patriot Act is another one, various members of Congress that didn't have it, couldn't have possibly read it, and the ones that did have it, didn't read it. The other one is the Federal Reserve, and our capstone lawsuit is the illegal and fraudulent, or abusive and fraudulent use of the income tax code. All Americans should know, even if the 16th Amendment was ratified legally in 1913, that most Americans do not have 16th Amendment income, and due to the 61 code in Title 26, they do not have taxable income. And thank you for your forbearance.
No, that's okay, thank you, Mr. McGuire. Lou Santean? Lou Santean? Lou still here? Outside. Ernestina Montellano? Ernestina, how are you?
Fine, good evening. I'm really concerned about whatever happened to the GRIP money for gang intervention. You know, that money was supposed to go to Boyle Heights to help prevent the gangs from getting out of hand. Where is it? I want to know that.
Yes, the GRIP money is just been designated to Boyle Heights, they're still in the planning process, they haven't spent any of it, and they will spend it in Boyle Heights.
But in the meantime, our kids are going down, and there's been a lot of things that are happening in Boyle Heights while you and the rest of yous are deciding, how long? How long are you gonna decide?
Well, first of all...
We need your help, we don't need you to tell us that it's right there, we know it's there.
Thank you.
Could I say one thing more, please?
Yes.
I also want to know whatever happened to the petition that the seniors sent to you and Molina for the 250 and the 253. Let me tell you, this could have been solved a long time ago. You could have been putting a van for us, or a dash from another company under the MTA. Why hasn't that been done? Why are we, like, ignored? And I mean, we are ignored, and you know it, Viegosa, we were there for you, we went door to door, I got people to go up and down. We had our hearts set on someone that was going to help us, but I don't know what happened. Right now, we don't even seem to have you. I mean, we are alone, you only come up on certain things, but in the things that are really needed, these seniors are walking in the hot heat, and it's really hot, and we have to go to three buses to get to our senior centers, and to get to our clinic appointments, and whatever. If this was in another area, you would have already did something for that if there was a lot to do.
Thank you very much, Ms. Montellano.
So you could get more money from their taxes. So please help us.
Thank you. And just so you know, that request went to the MTA, and we're in the process of, we've met with them, and advocated on behalf of continuing that line, and they've indicated that there's not the ridership there, but we're looking at the expansion of the dash, and as you well know, we also put a rapid bus down that street as well, one of the few rapid buses in the city.
But it's going on the same route that the 255 is going, and we don't need that.
I know.
We need the same route that the 253 had.
I understand. Most communities really want that rapid bus. Thank you. Monica Harmon? Monica Harmon? Yes, Ms. Heimis?
Okay, I'm representing the Pico Aliso community.
That's right.
A 15-year-old boy was gunned down while going to play at a park, and he was not from a gang. Why was there no reward put out for any information on his killers? This community is crying out for resources.
You may finish.
For a safer community, this community is crying out for safer, crying out for resources, for a safer community to be treated as human beings and to be respected. The families need to be treated as human beings, not animals. The youth are the future voters, they need to be treated with respect. They are tired of hanging out and being targeted as gang members when they are not. They want jobs, they want job trainings, a teen post, but also for the police to stop the harassment and stereotyping, and start working with the community, and start, stop the aggression, and bring in the peace. The parks don't have any programs for these teens, especially boys. Open the doors, open the doors for us, so we can in turn open the doors to the future generations of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Veronica, I'm sorry, Brendan McDuffie?
Hello.
Hi, Brendan.
Brevan.
I'm sorry, Brevan?
Yeah, I'm from Pico Aliso Projects, you should be familiar with that, and our parks are closed, the police that you put there to stop the violence, to harassing us, I can't know where to go, I'm standing on street corners. You bring people in, our community, that don't know us, that are not helping us, and the funding that you have for us is going to waste. I'm not getting no public aid from your, none of the programs that you guys talked about. Your YO program, not doing nothing for me, or my friends, I don't go on no outings with them, but you guys come and brag and boost about them. I wanted to know, what programs can you do for us to keep our parks open? And the cops, stop the harassment. I'm tired of being harassed in my own community.
Thank you. Scott Johnson?
Good evening, City Council, my name is Scott Johnson, and I want to take the time tonight to personally thank Councilman Viegosa for her leadership in seeking funding for the Ascot Hills project in the Hatcher Park Woodlands. As a lifelong resident of Boyle Heights who grew up in a modern gardens, I was blessed with the opportunity in Mercy City Elementary, partaking in outdoor activities and field trips. These experiences helped me to shape my values and live by today in regard to communal and environmental principles. In preserving and restoring these ecological treasures, let invites the community to become stewards and caretakers. We have students at Wilson High School Natural Resources and Environmental Science Academy who have been working on restoring native plants and trees to the areas in the Ascot Hills and on the edges of the Ascot Hills. You could take a drive up to Monaloma and see some of the projects they've been working on right outside the school there. In addition, they've been doing this for the last few years, and I want to give some props tonight to Teacher Stan Catatso, who just recently retired, who was full-time science teacher, the head of the academy, the founder of the academy, and also the last head football coach at Wilson, and won a city championship back, I think, in 1979. These students and honors with the vision should be given a chance to restore the Ascot Hills in concert with the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy. In addition, the Outdoor Education Center that is planned for that facility should be a one-stop center for environmental education and outdoor recreation. I just wanted to wrap you up there. With the vision and leadership that in the future, when you go to Ascot Hills or Hatcher Park, the range you could talk to could be a... when you go to Ascot Hills or Hatcher Park, the range you could talk to could be a local born, local school, the biologist could be school locally, and adults in leading your hikes someday up there in that preserve could be one of your neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Don Justin Jones? Don Justin Jones? Hugo Garcia? Hugo Garcia? Claire Markgraf? Claire Markgraf? Rosalinda Cepeda? Rosalinda Cepeda? How are you, sir?
Good evening, Antonio. Xavier Estrada from LA 32 here. Been here for a while, 47 years. I just want to make sure that you're aware of the issue of KMPC towers. We're working diligently with KMPC. We have several concerns here, mostly dealing with giving something back to our community, and we're hoping that in earnest, KMPC will give something back to the community as far as, hopefully, some scholarships to the local high school, and help out in maybe giving donations of any old equipment that we could reinvest in a program, which I came out of. The equipment that you see here, that the cameras and stuff like that, we had a teacher that helped myself and several other large engineers graduate and go on to other schools of learning. Since then, that program has been dropped from the high school. Hopefully, a group of us can bring this back to Wilson High School. If you're interested, you should get in contact with me.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. José Aguilar?
Hello, I'm a constituent of Boyle Heights, and I know Antonio's taking some heat here, but what I want to do is congratulate you for the intestinal fortitude that you took against the Department of Water and Power that was gouging the constituents, the city of Los Angeles, to the tune of $20 million. It's very hard for me to believe that people could steal the city blind and never go to jail, and yet, some of our youngsters here, they go knock off a liquor store or a bank, they're sitting up for 10 years. I mean, white-collar criminals should be treated the same way as street thugs. They should do the same time. Anyhow, I'm here in support for Villarrigosa and Weiss called for a 90-day suspension of a recently-approved 11% water rate hike increase. The move would be an attempt to force the DWP's top managers to do a better job, they said. The only way we're going to, this is Antonio's quote, "The only way to compel management reforms is to hang the sword of Demaculus over this department..."
The sword of Damocles.
"Damocles," excuse me, "Damocles" over this department. And Antonio and Mr. Weiss, I am very grateful, because as you know, Boyle Heights, as neighborhood council, voted no for this rate increase.
Thank you.
Also with the Valley, and I just want to say, I don't have any more money for DWP.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. And I like the heat. Belen Aller, or Ballen Aller? Ballen Aller? Peter Orona? Peter Orona? And then after that? Grissette Francisco?
Good evening, honorable council members. My name's Peter Orona.
How are you, Mr. Orona?
Fine, sir, thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on the Valley Boulevard, Alhambra Avenue connector. I live at 5472 Allen Street, one block up low, where the connector's going to end, and behalf on some of my neighbors, I'm opposed to this connector road. There has to be another solution. I could go on and on. I would greatly appreciate it if you and the council members look for a better solution rather than sugarcoating it the way you have this fact sheet here, and you're spoon-feeding the community. This connector will bring numerous benefits for Alserino community, including greater north-south access to and from the community, improve mobility, and reduce travel times for community residents, reduce air pollutants from idling trucks and cars. We don't have that now, and I believe in progress, and the Alameda Corridor is not doing it for LA, and you need revenues, but there's got to be a different answer, a different solution. Show some backbone, dig underneath, build a tunnel, the technology's there, I'm sure, you know?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment tonight. On behalf of, is there any other?
Council just has motions for posting and referral. If they're posted and referred.
Those motions are posted and referred?
And that would clear the desk.
Desk is cleared. Any announcements? Any announcements? Any adjourning motions? Hearing none? Mr. Padilla has an announcement.
And my announcement colleagues, I think Mr. Villarrigosa did a great job in thanking everybody involved in putting this offsite together, but we should thank him for having the idea to host this committee here, this council meeting here in the 14th Council District. It's been a while since we've been here. We promised to be back, so thank you, Mr. Villarrigosa, and your entire office for your hospitality.
Thank you all.
And there's no other announcements. We do have one adjourning motion. If I can ask everybody to please rise? Can I have everybody in the audience please stand? Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourning motions. First is Letty Butler, who was 91-years-old, passed away in her sleep on Friday, July 16th. She was a longtime resident on Victoria Avenue in the 10th Council District. Ms. Butler was very involved in her community, who was, and always addressed, community issues and concerns. She played a very active role in the community coalition established by former council member David Cunningham. She was the founder of the West Adams Neighborhood Improvement Association. Also, she was one of the founding members of the 10th Council District Women's Steering Committee. She leaves behind a host of family members and friends. Funeral services will be held this Friday, July 23rd, at West Angeles Church of God and Christ at 11:00 AM. And then finally, I know that neither council member Parks or council member Perry could be here, and they would join with me in this. Ms. Anita Tridoris Hudson Edwards, born to Levi Hudson and Eleanor Davis Hudson on September 20th, 1915, in Carthage, Texas. Graduated from Bishop College in Marshall, Texas. She was a founding member of First Baptist Church of Palm Springs, California, also founding member of the local NAACP chapter in Palm Springs. She's preceded in death by her husband Frank Edwards. She leaves behind to cherish her memory two sons, Willis Edwards and Frank Edwards, and a daughter, Brenda Jo Pine, 11 grandchildren, 31 great-grandchildren, and a host of nieces and nephews, in addition to the many relatives and friends in California and Texas. And I understand funeral services are going to be held this Saturday, and just on a personal note, I don't know if there's a member of this council that has not met her son, Willis Edwards. Next week is the Democratic National Convention, and my fondest memory of Willis is walking into Madison Square Gardens. He handed me a business card that said, "This is my house," and he proceeded to sit me down to lunch with Rosa Parks and members of the Kennedy family, who came to have lunch with Willis Edwards. And there was no mistake that Willis Edwards, through the life of his mother, has made an indelible mark on Los Angeles and the country, and is somebody that has really played a great role in Los Angeles, as the former president of the Beverly Hills chapter of NAACP. And so, on behalf of all of the people around Los Angeles, I know the Han family knows the Willises very well, we all extend our heartfelt condolences to Willis Edwards and the loss of his mother.
All members. Any other tributes? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much for being here. This meeting is now adjourned.